Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, October 10th, 2018 at 7 o'clock. Can I ask for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to do the roll call. We have to my far right, Jamie Hines, who is an alternate, who will be voting on the minutes, Jeffrey Kohan, James Fitzsimmons. To my far left, Steve Allinson, who will be filling in for Jim Sechter, and Rocco Materazzo, and Chair JP Vinoit. First order of business, can I ask for the approval of the minutes for July 9th, 2018, and Monday, August 13th, 2018?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 9th minutes and August 13th minutes as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nene's motion carries. Thank you. Just for everyone to know, the application 411-18, special permit warehouse and offices, Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, Five Research Parkway, we are hearing today, but we are not taking action. We have two other applications, site plan accessory apartment, Thorpe 100 Chimney Hill Road, application 213-18 is postponed, and under new business, site plan vehicle storage facility, Six Research LLC, Six Research Parkway, application 214-18 is also postponed. Our first order of business for the public hearing, we have a legal notice. Can you, Rocco, read into the record all the correspondence for special permit warehouse and offices, Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, Five Research Parkway, application 411-18?
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, 411-18, special permit traffic generation for Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, to allow two warehouse distribution buildings totaling 1,101,525 square feet at Five Research Parkway. Legal notices, we have correspondence dated from... Correspondence from Dennis Senaviva to Casey Hand, dated Friday, September 7th, 2018. We have correspondence dated September 5th, 2018, referencing special permit application 411-18, Five Research Parkway. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated September 7th, 2018. Correspondence dated July 6th, 2018, from Senaviva Law Firm to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner. Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated 7/6/18, signed by Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated 7/6/2018, signed by the Fire Marshal. Correspondence dated July 16th, 2018, to Casey Costello, Casey Hand, Tom and Louise Laboudis. Sorry if I got that wrong. Memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Rob Baltamidis, Department of Engineering, dated September 11th, 2018. Correspondence dated September 4th, 2018. It's just to whom it may concern. Vincent and Deborah Laboudis. Interdepartmental memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated September 17th, 2018. Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated July 9th, sorry, dated 7/6/2018, signed We have some correspondence dated September 24th, 2018, to Casey Hand, Town of Wallingford, from Bill Fries. Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated 7/6/2018, signed again by the Environmental Inter-office memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated September 28th, 2018. Correspondence dated September 28th, 2018, to Casey Hand, Town Planner, and Aaron O'Hare, Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated 9/7/18, signed by the Fire Marshal. Memorandum to James E. Vitale, Chairman, Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, from Janice Small, Corporation Counsel, dated October 3rd, 2018. Response memo from Casey Hand, Town Planner, to applicant's representatives, dated October 9th, 2018. To Rob Baltamidis, Town Engineer, from Sherat Kaluri. Sorry if I get that wrong. Memorandum or correspondence dated October 5th, 2018, to Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, from Michelle Carlson, Director of Land Development. Correspondence dated October 5th, 2018, to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner. Again, from Michelle Carlson, Director of Land Development. Correspondence dated October 5th, 2018, to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner. Again, Michelle Carlson, Director of Land Development. The proposed development plan dated October 9th, 2018. Correspondence dated October 10th, 2018, to Casey Hand, Town Planner.
That's from Deborah Phillips.
Deborah Phillips, yes. Interdepartmental referral, application 411-18, dated 9/7/18, signed by Director of Health. Correspondence dated October 10th, 2018, to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Michelle Carlson, Director of Land Development. Some correspondence dated 10/10/2018, to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from William Stuckey. Memorandum to Rob Baltamidis, Town Engineer, Casey Hand, Town Planner, dated October 5th, Memorandum to the Inland Wetlands Commission, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated September 28th, 2018. Correspondence to Chairman James Vitale, Wallingford Inland Wetlands Commission, dated October 3rd, 2018. Memorandum to Inland Wetlands Commission, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated October 3rd, 2018. Some correspondence of conditions of approval, dated October 10th, 2018, referencing the application 411-18, Five Research Parkway. Revised set of plans dated September 25th, 2018.
You got everything?
I might get that.
What was that?
I don't know.
I didn't get that.
I didn't get that.
Oh, that was...
That's not part of this.
You don't have to worry about that. Nope.
That's recycling.
We got everything, right?
I believe so.
You sure? All right. So go ahead and start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For your record, my name is Dennis Senaviva. I'm an attorney with the Senaviva Law Firm, representing the owner and applicant Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC. With me to my left is Michelle Carlson and Bill Fries. They are from BL Companies, the team project engineers. We also have in the audience Fred Greenberg, who is a traffic engineer from BL Companies, Brian Op, who's our geotechnical engineer from TerraCon, and owners' representatives to answer any questions this commission may have. Just by way of a quick overview, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this parcel is one for which you're probably somewhat familiar. It's about 180 acres in size, it's zoned IX, currently developed with the former Bristol Myers Squibb headquarters. That building's about 975,000 square feet. There are some additional buildings onsite, a generating plant, daycare, and the applicant is raising the existing building and power plant after December 31st, when Bristol Myers Squibb will be vacating the site. The parcel is bordered by Carpenter Lane to the north, CLMP property to the east, Barnes Road and some residential properties to the south, and Research Parkway to the west. Now, the applicant, as you know from the application, proposes to construct two new industrial buildings totaling about 1.1 million square feet with attendant truck loading spaces and car parking spaces. We've got a couple of boards and we've got a PowerPoint presentation to help you understand those plans that are before you. The site design discussion regarding site issues such as erosion, sediment control plan, stormwater management, protection of your watershed, architecture, landscaping, that'll all be presented tonight by both Michelle Carlson and Bill Fries. But first, by way of a little house cleaning, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, my client and I want to thank the commission for hearing our application prior to the vote on the pending wetlands application in front of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. That process has taken a little longer than we had originally envisioned, so we appreciate the fact that you're listening to this application. I can tell you that we've worked tirelessly to address the commission's concerns, and I don't believe you'll be seeing any changes when they go to vote in November from the application we're presenting to you, the site plan that we're presenting to you. I also wanted to point out that one of those exhibits that Mr. Materazzo read into the record, one of them is that report dated October 3rd. It was addressed to the chairman of the Wetlands Commission. It's from George Cotter on behalf of CW International. He served in the role of an independent reviewer of our erosion sediment control plan. Everyone understands how important that is to this site. And again, Michelle, we'll touch on that in the presentation, but I wanted to point out that that letter was developed by Mr. Cotter. He was, again, the town representative paid for by the applicant, by my client, but again, it was his charge to review the erosion sediment control plan to ensure that commission, and I think hopefully you, that our plan of erosion sediment control not only will protect Wallingford's wetlands and watercourses, but also your watershed. So again, that's an important part of the record. I just wanted to bring your attention to that. Additionally, when we filed the application, Mr. Chairman, in anticipation of what this commission may desire, without being presumptuous, we consented to the hiring by the town of an independent traffic reviewer, and you've got correspondence in your record already from that company, CDM Smith. They've prepared initial comments dated October 5th. We will be meeting with them, reviewing their comments, and our expectation is to have those ongoing discussions reach or achieve a mutually acceptable plan that we'll be presenting back to you for your November consideration. And lastly, before Michelle begins the presentation, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of your Town Planner. Mrs. Hand has been generous of her time and talents on this application, very generous, and my client, together with all of the members of our project team, wanted to let you know how fortunate we felt to have the benefit of those talents. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have Michelle begin the presentation.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Michelle Carlson. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I work for BL Companies located at 355 Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. I'm here to give you an overview of the project. We do have slides, so I don't know if you're going to be able to turn around and see them or how you want me to go forward with the presentation. I know it...
We'll turn.
This is just an existing plan of the site, which, you know, I'm sure you all are aware of. It's 180 acres roughly. This area of our proposed work is about 80 acres, and then there's about 100 acres, you know, left of wetlands, upland review, the former daycare, and we're going to be doing the majority of our work in this area here. The existing Bristol Myers building will be demolished and as will the existing power plant. So I'll show you what we're proposing to do on the site. I want to just go through the... Yeah, this is just a colored version of the site plan, an overview, just a general overview, nothing specific, just to give you an idea of what we're doing, and it's the same, similar to the boards that we have. We're proposing Warehouse 1 here, that's roughly about 640,000 square feet on the northern side. We have Warehouse 2, which is about 460,000 feet, I'm sorry, on the southern side. This is the, just to orientate you, this is the muddy river that's running through the site, and it runs through the pond and then out to the culverts and off the property, just to orientate you. I should have done that first, sorry. Warehouse 1, we're proposing 488 car parking spaces, 142 trailer stalls here and back here, and then we have 136 loading docks, it's a double-loaded facility. Warehouse 2, on the southern side of the site, there's approximately 628 car parking here, and then we're proposing 101 trailer stalls and 108 loading docks, and the loading docks, again, are on each side of the building. It's double-loaded. The proposed entrances are, we're going to maintain the existing entrance at Research Parkway today and come through, and the trucks are going to come in, and the cars, and then they're going to split. Trucks will continue on, so we have plenty of queuing space on through the guardhouse, and then they'll enter the facility where they can get around and load or unload, depending upon what their business is. Cars will come in and they will peel off first, just pass the pond, and they will park in a lot here. So the goal is to keep the cars and the trucks separated. That's typical for these type of facilities. On the Carpenter Lane side, we're proposing two cuts. The first cut is for the trucks to go in and out. It's a double-loaded lane in, so that we have enough queuing for the trucks, and then outbound right next to it, and then you enter with cars here, and the cars are right in, right out, proposed on Carpenter Lane, so that we don't have cars coming down from this way, and we can explain that in more detail when we get into the detailed plans. I'm just giving you a general overview right now. So that's the proposed site layout. Now I want to get into the grading and drainage, give you an overview of that. Right now, this is the existing grading and drainage system. I've color-coded it just so that you can see where things outlet right now. For instance, there's some direct discharges from Carpenter Lane that come into the existing wetland system. Same thing with Research Parkway. There's some direct discharges that are collecting the road runoff from the two roads that are entering into the site today. The parking lot here in yellow is being collected, and then there's discharges over land off of the site. This is the extension of the muddy river. There's a road crossing here, and the muddy river is culverted underneath this existing road crossing. The red up at the top by the power plant is where surface water and roof water is being collected from the power plant area, and it discharges right up near the top of the muddy river as it's entering onto the subject property. The purple network of existing storm ultimately ends up into these ponds and then off the site through the two culverts here and off the site. Right now, this system doesn't have any, you know, pretreatment. There's no sand filters or technic units, nothing that's renovating the storm water or treating the water, the water quality volume. These two ponds, you know, are sized for detaining the water before it does leave the site, but, you know, we recognize now that we are in a sensitive watershed area. We want to protect the downstream resources, so we're proposing a much more robust plan for stormwater management. So if we go to the next plan... In the design of our stormwater, too, the water that exits the site, you know, off the property in the southwest corner down by Barnes Road, that's our overall design point, the final design point of water leaving the site here. And when the water leaves here through all storm events, we're not increasing the rate of runoff, and we're not actually increasing volume. We're controlling volume onsite with all of our stormwater controls. So that's a really good thing with this plan. So it is good for, you know, water quality, peak rate of runoff, and volume. So we're not increasing peak or volume through all storm events. We have a pretty robust plan. I'll be brief, explaining what we're doing, where the storm water's going, and as we get through, if you want any specific questions answered, I'll be happy to answer them. The red, what we're trying to do with the design is match the existing stormwater patterns to the best extent possible. So for instance, we're taking this portion of the roof of the first warehouse, and we're having a discharge up to the beginning of the muddy river, which is similar to where part of the, similar to the amount of storm water that's going there today from the existing power plant. So the whole premise of this is to match the water, you know, at the design points along the site, and then make sure that we're not increasing rate of runoff when we leave the site. So this portion of the stormwater will discharge up here to the muddy river. It'll be collected from the roof. There's no parking lot runoff, anything. That's just strictly roof runoff going through that red pipe. The rest of the roof from this warehouse in yellow is going to be collected underground in big flat pipes that are perforated. So some of this storm water will have the ability to infiltrate into the ground before it discharges down to this design point here. So we are getting some infiltration capacity through the soils, and by having big flat pipes that are collecting it underground, it will be able to discharge some of it into the groundwater. The parking area over here, we are collecting, and we're running it through Vortechnic Unit, Sand Filter, and then it'll discharge up in here. This is the underground detention system, Vortechnic Unit, Sand Filter, Discharge. We added a roof discharge, just to drop back for a minute, here also, so that we could mimic water going into this wellon system. We didn't want to just have one discharge way up here and one down here when there was some coming down the middle to begin with, so we added a midpoint discharge to help mimic the existing drainage patterns. So everything from Warehouse 1 and the parking associated with it on the northern side is either being infiltrated, pretreated, much more in robust controls over what we have today. The back part of the parking lot here, the purple and around the side and over here, is going to be collected and run through Vortechnic Units, you know, hydrodynamic separators, and then into an underground detention system. And the underground detention system will then go over land and flow into a sand filter and then into the wetland system and ultimately into the pond. This system on this side of the project, where the second warehouse, we're collecting everything that's shown in green, and we are bringing it through all of the parking in here, the roof, this parking is all going to be collected in a pipe system. It's going to go through Vortechnic Units, a sand filter here, then a sediment for bay, and then into a detention basin. The detention basin is sized to handle the 100-year storm event with a foot of freeboard, and then it'll discharge out and into the wellon system underneath Barnes Road. The parking in here will get collected and run through the sand filter, the same as up here, and then ultimately into the ponds. When we designed the system, we didn't take into account capacity in the existing ponds. If you've been out to the site at all, there's a dam here, and water does run over the dam, so we had to assume that water's running over the dam when we designed our stormwater. So we're not, you know, taking any capacity into account for these ponds in our stormwater design. So that's a general overview, but I think we're definitely protecting the watershed by all the controls that we're putting in place, Vortechnic Units, infiltration, underground detention, sand filters, you know, the detention pond here will have a wet bottom with plantings, much more, it exceeds the DEP water quality manual requirements. We're treating the water quality volume. We're doing everything that we're supposed to do, and then some, and none of which really is present today. So we think we have a really good stormwater plan to protect downstream resources. Now I want to talk about sedimentation and erosion control, because that's another, you know, concern. We're going to be opening up the site. We have to make sure that we have proper controls in sight so that we protect the wetland system and any downstream resources off-site. The first phase will be the demolition phase. So what we're highlighting in the yellow area is the areas of existing building and the power plant, which will be decommissioned and demolished as a first phase of the project. So these areas will have silt fence, hay bales and silt fence. We're proposing a triple layer of silt fence, hay bale, silt fence, which I'll show you a detail of, you know, all around the downstream perimeter, and then the small areas with green. the downstream perimeter, and then the small areas with green here are temporary sediment traps, so that any storm water that could potentially runoff from these areas will be diverted into these sediment traps via swales that will be implemented, and that's what these are. These areas here are just stockpiles, any materials, soil materials that are stockpiled on-site will have to have silt fence rung around, and if they're exposed more than 30 days, they have to be temporarily either seeded or covered with mulch hay. So everything is done in accordance and in excess with the 2002 State of Connecticut with erosion sediment control guidelines, none of which were in play when this was first developed. So after we get through the demolition, and we're into the earthwork phase, this drawing here, I believe, was handed out to you. This is the cut-and-fill analysis on-site. The red areas are areas of cut, and the different shades represent of red, the less areas, the smaller areas of cut, so the greater areas of cut are in the deep red, and then the cut peters off, and then we get into a fill condition, we get into the green condition. So the areas of green represent fill, and what we're going to do, is how they're going to work the site, is they're going to cut from areas that need to be cut, and move that material down to the areas that need to be filled while they're building the wall. As they get the cut to the grades it's going to be, then they'll put erosion control blankets and stabilize it. So once areas reach finished grade, they'll be stabilized, either with seeding, landscaping, erosion control matting, whatever we're calling for on the plans, whatever's necessary to stabilize it. So theoretically, you're working the site from west to east, cutting and filling on both sides, right? Cutting and filling to balance out the site and get the table that we need for the development. So as part of this operation, we have to have temporary sedimentation and erosion controls in place throughout the different phases. So we demo the site, and then what happens is, we install a series of erosion and sedimentation control traps, which are shown in green in the various areas of the site. This basin will be installed first, after the demo, after all the erosion controls are put in place. The first thing we do is we take this two-acre area where the permanent detention basin's going to be, and we create our temporary sedimentation basin that's going to remain in place throughout construction. So there's going to be burms in here, stone burms, so water's going to come in through the forbay, and then sit, go through the stone burms, and eventually make its way out through the outlet while the sediment settles and is left behind. All the areas in orange that were up there were areas that were going to be potential stockpile areas, and they'll be rung in silt fence. The dotted lines represent diversion ditches that will be leading storm water to the sediment traps, there'll be stone check dams in them. We've talked about the use of flocculent logs, because some of the soils are going to be, there's going to be some red soils, not as much as we anticipated, which is a good thing from the geotechnical investigations. So we're going to be using flocculent where necessary to help settle out the solids, we're going to work with Eric Kruger, and a flocculent supplier, to make sure that we are using the material that will not adversely impact the water quality in this area. So that's kind of the first phase, so we get these controls in place, then we start cutting on the top, filling on the bottom while we're building the wall. Then as the site comes up in grade, the areas shown in green on the upper side of the plan are areas that we've cut, and we've now put erosion control matting along here, and they're being stabilized, we're not working in these areas anymore. The bottom, green, has been established, the wall bottom is coming up, and so now these sediment traps move inward as the site's coming up. And they're diverted to armored outlets here. Here, we're basically using the final, what will become final storm water control outlets as our temporary runoff outlets for erosion control. So when it comes out of the sediment traps, there'll be clean water, because one thing I'll show you too, in each sediment trap, I don't know if you've heard of a faircloth skimmer, there'll be a faircloth skimmer that's in there, that basically skims the water off the surface, and that's what runs out of the sediment trap. So the water's in the sediment trap, the sediment's settling, whether on its own or by the use of flocks, and then it's being, the clean water skimmed off the top and taken out of the pond. And that's how we typically get clean water out, and you'll see the faircloth skimmer, we'll bring it the next meeting. It's literally just a PVC unit, and whoever created it is a millionaire, and it's a simple design, which, do you have a picture of it? Yeah, we'll show you. That's the faircloth skimmer in white, well, right here, that's it, it's just PVC piping. There's a small inch and a half to two-inch orifice here, water gets skimmed off the top, and goes through this orifice, and it's designed for generally a two-day drain-down time, and that's what it looks like up there, that's like a two-by-two square. And it siphons off clean water. And this is a cross-section of the proposed sediment trap, which will help you look at, this is the water's going to come in here, and it's going to settle in here, be skimmed off the top, through the faircloth skimmer, and it comes out and underneath the berm, goes on a riprap splash pad, and then through hay bales before even gets to the outlet area. So there's a whole series of controls in place throughout this plan. Another thing that we're doing as part of this plan, before we even start construction, we are going to drain down these two existing ponds. This pond is drained down every so often when they have to inspect the dam as part of their permit, there's an existing permit with the Connecticut DEP for this dam that's here, and as a part of a requirement, you have to inspect all the controls. This large existing pond down here actually has a 30-inch orifice down below with a gate that you can turn, and you can drain the pond. And these two ponds are connected, so when this pond drains down, this pond drains down. So what we're going to do before we start anything is we're going to drain down those ponds, we're going to inspect the outlet orifice, we're going to make sure we put anything over it to ensure that when we drain it down again, that no sediment comes down, and these ponds are going to be kept low, so that if there is a major storm event, we have suspenders on pond suspenders. This will be an additional failsafe measure that can hold excess storm water if needed. So that's the intent for the use of those ponds, they're not going to be used as sediment traps, they're just going to be drained down, so that they're just an extra precautionary measure if they're needed in the event of a large storm, or say successive storms back-to-back that are smaller. The main pond, too, we are over to the right, that we're building this permanent detention basin, will be a permanent basin when all is said and done with construction, but throughout construction, we're going to maintain the stone check dams in here, and it will be used for erosion control, and then once we're done with the project, things are established, we'll clean out the ponds and go on. So that's a general overview of the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Plan. One more thing I want to show you is trabidity curtains that will be put in ponds as needed. You can see, this is a trabidity curtain in a pond, to the left side is very dirty water, to the right side is the water that has settled out and moved through the curtain. I don't know if you've seen trabidity curtains, but they're almost like heavy-duty, thick, thick silt fence-type material, they're weighted on the bottom, they flow down the top, and we're going to have these on-site, so that if there's large storm events, we can put them in the pond and be ready for large storm events. All these materials are also going to be kept and stored on-site in excess, so that if there is a rain event projected, say there's a hurricane coming, and we're out there and things are happening, we have everything available to implement, supplement, whatever we need to do. The lower left of this drawing shows our perimeter silt fence sandwich, which is shown when we blow back out in red. Basically, what we're going to do, on the downstream side, we're going to have this 48-inch-tall silt fence on steel tubes, so that it's rigid, and it's not going to fail. Typically, when silt fence fails, it's because those wooden posts lean in, because all the silt's come on the fence, and it fails, and the silt runs over. Silt fence closest to the wetlands and to the Muddy River is going to be steel post with this fabric pulling across it, so that they're not going to fail. Then we're going to put a row of hay bales staked into the ground. Then in front of the hay bales, we're going to put traditional silt fence dug into the ground. So the first line of the fence is a traditional silt fence, then the hay bales, then the rigid silt fence. We used just the rigid silt fence, the heavy-duty super silt fence on the FedEx site in Middletown, and we lined that all across the bottom of the site, which is similar in the sense that we had wetlands all along the lower end of that site. We only used the super-duper silt fence, we didn't have the sandwich, and we didn't have any breakouts or silt going to the downstream wetland system. Now I'm going to have, before I continue on, I'm going to have Bill talk about the landscaping that we're proposing.
Good evening, Bill Fries from BL Companies, for the record. So when we looked at the landscaping for the site, we made sure we looked at all the regulations, the town zoning regulations, as it related to the front yard areas, the buffer areas, and then also within the parking lots and the perimeters. We've proposed several shade trees and buffering trees throughout the site, throughout the parking lot areas and the perimeters. They range from red maples, honeysuckle, the Norwood spruces, white pines, eastern white pines, American linden, and they're located throughout the site. As we zoom in, the parking lot areas have all shade trees throughout, meeting the requirements and the numbers needed. Landscaping islands have been supplied throughout the site. There is also, as we mentioned earlier, all the landscaping and the existing vegetation along the frontages, along Research Parkway, some along the side in this area, and then in through Carpenter, all will be remaining as part of that existing wetland system that's there today. This site, as we mentioned before, this building in this location here sits roughly where the Bristol Myers building sat for years. We've added existing or proposed buffering plantings throughout here, which are the white pines, Norways. As Michelle mentioned before, we have a vegetated basin located in this area, and we've made sure, we looked at a couple cross-sections, let me call them up, to kind of show you some of the advantage points, looking in from different positions along both High Hill Road, and then also along the neighbors to our south. And so just to zoom in here, we took a couple points along this area, and basically, as you look at the cross-section B, that's basically from this house, looking in, so you can see what they're looking at. And let me just zoom into the cross-section. And so basically, here's the view, they sit lower than the site. There's an existing set of trees that are on the property, both straddles the property lines, and mostly on the neighbor's property, and then cuts through, and so you'll see that we are higher up, but we have existing and proposed landscaping that we're showing in here, so that it would shed any of the lighting or anything from the site. Our lighting was designed for full cutoff fixtures, and that's pretty much cross-section B. Cross-section C is looking at it up in this manner. With cross-section C, there's proposed landscaping proposed in here, and there's also existing landscaping located within these wetland systems in this area, and it is mature-forested in that area. There's also, this also sits lower than the site, and there's a retaining wall here, and then again, all existing landscaping within this area that'll shed any parking lot lighting or headlights or anything. And as I zoom into B, that just kind of gives you another perspective of that view. And then the last one I wanted to show you was on, we took some advantage points, so driving up and down High Hill Road, there was a couple advantage points that you look in, and you could see some of the Bristol Myers building today. What you see is, basically Bristol Myers building today is about five stories, and our building will be a two-story. And in elevation, we're sitting lower than the hillside that's here today. So what happens is you have the CLMP power lines that are located in here, so you have vegetation right up against High Hill Road, you have the Bristol Myers power lines, or the CLMP power lines here, and then you have more existing vegetation before you get to our property. And then all of this area here almost sits down in a bowl from that area, we're lower in elevation. As Michelle showed you before, this was the deeper cuts in this area where we are lower in that. And if I zoom into the cross-section for A, this is kind of the advantage point, so again, High Hill Road here, power lines, these are the existing trees, some more existing trees, some proposed trees, and that's kind of the view you would see from High Hill. As I cut over to the other side of the site, bear with me, there we go. This is the Carpenter Lane side, and again, we are set back far away from Carpenter Lane, but again, focusing on shade trees throughout the landscaped areas in this area, vegetation to be planted all along Carpenter Lane, where there is some mature growth there today, but we're doing some grading in that area, so we're replacing those back in the front setbacks for the requirements. More shade trees and islands located in the drive here, and again, stabilizing with various seed mixes and erosion control blankets all along the edges of the property.
It's Michelle again. One thing I wanted to say is that on the perimeter of the project, on the eastern side, the top side of the page, we are going to maintain at the property line the bigger trees, we're not going to, you can see from the LOD line, that anything above that, between the LOD and the red, those trees are going to stay. We're not going to cut down any mature trees that are up along in that green color, all along across the site, as you pan across the site, we're going to maintain the mature trees that are there to assist with additional screening. A couple of things that I want to also hit upon are, we did some geotechnical investigations here, and we're going to be cutting in areas, you can see from the plan that was handed out to you, there's some spot sections where there might be a 60-foot cut, but the average cut's probably 25, 30 feet, and the average fill's probably about 20, 25 feet. And what we did is we had geotech work done out here, and knowing what our final grades were going to be, the warehouse on the left is going to be roughly at elevation 412, the warehouse on the right is going to be at elevation 403. Existing grade of Bristol Myers is around...
400.
400 today, on the right side, so the first floor of Bristol Myers, when you walk in, is roughly 400 feet, this warehouse is going to be about 403. So we did geotechnical investigations, and like I said earlier, touched upon, there's not as much red, silty soil that we thought, which is good, there's a lot of weathered, ripable rock. We don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot of blasting here. If there is any blasting, we have a plan that shows a little possible area here, and then another area here of blasting. And if blasting is required, we're going to do a pre-blast survey within 1,500 feet of the area that's blasted. I know that you have before you, I believe it's condition number nine, that Casey Hand, the town planner, has suggested be implemented in regards to blasting, and we're fine with that. Like I said, we don't anticipate blasting, if there is any, it's going to be minimal, but we just want to make sure that you're aware of that, and it's in those areas that we discussed. Another thing I want to talk about briefly, I didn't go into any of the bulk zoning standards, we comply with all the bulk zoning standards. We met... We met with Casey a couple of times. We know that there's some housekeeping items that have to be done, but they'll be done as, as part of final plans. There's nothing that we don't conform to or won't conform to when all is said and done from the bulk, from the bulk zoning standards. Want to make sure that, that we get that on the record. Parking. We, this is Class A office space. It's being marketed as Class A office space. It's in a Class A location. It's going to attract, you know, Class A tenants. They base, they usually have a one per 1,000 roughly parking requirement, one, one per 1,000 square feet of, of building. So, so say that's a 1.0 ratio. This site right now is parked at a .88. It's slightly under what a Class A warehouse person would want as far as car parking spaces, trailer spaces. BL Companies, we're doing a lot of warehouse work now, and we have for the past four years. E-commerce is, is huge now. That's like the new, the new thing. Warehouses are popping up, and we're doing a lot of work with different types of tenants. I personally am involved in projects in Charlotte, North Carolina, Fort Worth, Texas, Memphis, Tennessee, Denver, Colorado, Wellington, Connecticut, East Granby, Connecticut, Enfield, Connecticut, worked on Middletown, Connecticut project that's up and running. And, you know, we're working on this project. All the projects that I mentioned, except Middletown, which is brand new, every one of those projects that I'm working on has a parking expansion associated with the project. It's an existing facility, and we're expanding the parking because of, because of the needs. We're expanding parking onsite and offsite for automobiles, trailers, just because it's needed. So, you know, we feel that the parking that we're showing is reasonable and, and necessary for the type of tenants that are being wooed to the site. So I wanted to just, you know, make sure I put that on the record. I think there's anything else that I missed? Oh yeah, we have to talk about architecture.
So let me just run through, here are the colored elevations for the site. It's an industrial building, warehouse building. As you can see here, office components would be located here, here. These are the loading docks. I have a better picture that maybe shows that a little bit better. Here we go. This, this kind of shows you a little bit better of a picture. So the office component would be located roughly in this area. The, the construction for these buildings are usually tilt up. We've broke up the, the lengths of these buildings with some different colored elements located in here. Again, the loading dock doors are here. As you see, some windows to, in the, in the office areas, canopies over the doors, and that's basically, this is a view looking at what you would see from Carpenter Lane, looking in. And then the, the second building is roughly the same. This is the parking field located on the side, offices on this side. Again, some windows, some breakup of the materials using colors and accent bands along the tops, and use some, some white elements here to break up the width of the sides of the building.
I think one more thing I want to just touch upon are the retaining walls. Haven't really addressed the retaining walls. There's retaining walls on the site, obviously. We're cutting and filling and creating, you know, a 640,000 square foot table, you know, with associated parking around it on one side, and 460,000 square foot table and parking around it on, on the south side. So if we go back to the, the site plan, you know, I can just briefly go over the walls and the heights, and then I can show you some photos we have of existing sites and let you know of some existing locations of projects that our company has worked on that are, that are up and you can actually see. So basically, we'll start with the northern side, if you want to zoom into this warehouse. We have, we have a wall up along the back of this site. Right here, we're showing a bentonite trench. If you looked at your plans at all, we were calling for a bentonite trench. And to digress for a minute, the reason for that trench was there's this wetland up here that's actually higher. When we first started designing this, we didn't have all the geotechnical information yet, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't drain the wetland. Well, through the geotechnical analysis and through the work with the soil scientists, this upper wetland is actually a surface-fed wetland. So we do not need the bentonite dam because we're not going to drain any water away from this wetland because it is not a groundwater-fed wetland. Groundwater in this area is actually much lower than we thought, and it doesn't interface with the bottom of the wetland. So the, the walls in the back, you know, are, are, they go from zero to 25 to, you know, 40 feet tall. Down below, we go zero to, you know, the worst case, I think, is about 40 feet tall. On average, these walls are probably all in the 20 to 25 foot, foot range. And they're, you know, all along, it's along the bottom here, and then up here. So thus, you know, the cut from the top filled to the bottom. The area over on this side, we actually have a double tiered, tiered wall. We worked on this from the original plans that we, we had submitted. We actually retweaked the grading and raised up the site so that we have a balanced site, essentially, so that we're not moving earth. There's no mass import or export of fill, and we actually were able to decrease the size of the walls up here so that they're, they're two-tiered walls, and they're, they're roughly, you know, 15 to 20 feet in height. And then we have fewer walls here on the bottom on this side. So I, I have some photos that I can show you. If, if you've seen the FedEx site, we were fortunate enough to get town, some of the town staff up onto this site. We can't get the public up there. They were, they were kind enough to let us bring some staff members up. This site is, has walls that are 50 feet in height on the uphillside and the downhillside. And the left-hand picture here shows you how it's constructed, if you haven't seen it. These are segmental block walls. This is the bottom of the wall, the outside face, and they're filling behind and laying this geotechnical, this grids, this, this grid system behind the wall. And the grid system generally goes back 75 to 85% of the height of the wall. So if your wall is 50 feet, say like here, the grid goes back 42 or whatever, you know, 75 to 80% of that height is. As part of these walls, and during the building permit process, we have to actually have these walls will be designed, signed and sealed by a licensed structural engineer. They will conduct a global stability analysis as part of the design to ensure that everything works. FedEx wall, when you drive up, if you could zoom in on that lower right-hand, that's the finished site. This site, at one point during construction, was wide open, and it was about 120 to 140 acres of just open site. And we had no, no issues with erosion, and you could see that silt fence actually around here still in this picture that's on the downstream side. These walls here are roughly 50 feet tall at their highest point. So in the back here is a 50-foot wall, then we've got this nice big table, then we have another 50-foot wall, then we have our, our guardhouse and gateway entry, and then we have another wall that, that's, you know, 40 to 50 feet slope, and then wetlands. So this is something that, you know, we're, we're very confident in, in the design that we've, we've put forward and presented to you this evening. Oh, one last thing. Similar places, if you want to go see walls that we've done, Costco, New Britain, Lisbon Landing, Guilford Commons, that opened about a year and a half ago with the Fresh Market. This site, you can only get so far, and I didn't tell you that you could drive up the driveway. I'm missing one. Which one am I missing? I think that's it. It's a good, it's a good handful, but if you need addresses or anything, let us know. Happy to, to show you a site.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the presentation for this evening. Again, we're prepared to answer any questions. One of the things I wanted to point out, and I think it's, hopefully it's fairly obvious, is that we've been at this for a while, and, and we've been meeting with Casey and, and with your town engineer, Rob Baltramitis. We've met with Eric Kruger from Water and Sewer. We've met with the fire chief, with the police chief. I mean, we've been through, and of course, the environmental planner, we've been through the town offices with the expectation of doing that which is important to the town, you know, to meet the concerns that the town has. So it's been actually a pleasure representing this particular client because there are, you know, there are reasonable requests, and they're prepared to honor them, and that's why we've, again, we've anticipated the need for a peer review on our traffic. You'll see in one of the comments from Casey, there's a suggested site monitor during construction, a town unapproved, client-paid monitor. Again, all these things are reasonable, and we're prepared to, to meet the conditions as suggested. We, we have an opportunity, I think, one more day to have some conversation with your planner, and I think we've moved forward well in the last month or so.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start first with commissioners having any questions. Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I know you're going to be back next month, so I just have, actually have a, a couple, and I thank you for that presentation and the significant volume of data that we've received. Being familiar with the site, I guess one of the concerns I had, and you don't have to address it now, but be prepared for next time, is I don't see anywhere in the plans any signage. Is there a plan to do signage out on Research, out in Carpenter, on the building? If so, you know, just, it should be discussed because your building is so far back from the road. So I think of like, across the street is the Connecticut Food Bank, where the sign is right on the building, there's nothing else. So that's seen to be missing. The other question, and, and, you know, I won't, I won't ask the, you know, the, the big question in the room, you know, who is it? But what are the hours of operation for this facility? Okay? The other concern I had, and I know Casey has done a tremendous job, and Rob, you know, there's a lot of documentation we got before the meeting, and certainly as we arrived here this evening. One of the concerns I had is, and Mr. Saviva is no stranger to this group, this site abuts residential. And so whenever we have mixed residential use, excuse me, this type of use next to residential, we have to be concerned about this. Now, you know, it's a chicken and egg thing. Bristol Myers was there for a long time. They're leaving, as you said, at the end of the year. This construction and this operation would certainly impact the neighbors. You did show us the, the cut through and the view that the neighbors would have. One question I have, again, not knowing further detail of the ultimate, ultimate owner or user of the property, would there be outdoor speakers? What type of noise would this generate? Again, it gets to the noise question. It's a special permit, so that's a concern that we need, I, I would need more information on to address the special permit. Wallingford does have a noise ordinance, so we have another large food operation with a, with an issue next to residential. I, I just, not knowing who's going in, but you, we should discuss that because that would definitely have to be something. Again, I'm whispering to the chairman and others, this is massive. This is massive. And I'm sitting there thinking, these are not car parking spots, these are trailer truck parking spots. I mean, as I look at it, I think there's 243 tractor-trailer parking spots. So I, I think of, you know, if one of them's running, it's noise. If they all start to run at night over the 24-hour operation, that's where the question's coming from. I mean, this is a significant change to what's there now. So I think of just, I need to be, need more information for next time on the noise, the hours of operation, things like that. Staying on the, on the truck issue, I've read both the, your traffic study and our first cut of the peer review, and I assume you have each.
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing, it, it, it concerns me, looking at our peer review's response to yours, is some things are missing. And I think some of the questions our peer reviewer, excuse me, Casey, is our peer reviewer here?
The peer reviewer is not here tonight. He will be at the next meeting. And Mr. Baltramitis will also be at the next meeting. So since the peer review was just completed in the last couple days, I think the applicant wanted an opportunity to try to work out some of the comments with the peer reviewer, and I think they're hoping to have, you know, kind of gotten a little further in the process for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. I, I think, I think our peer review comments, where he talks about the intersection of Research Parkway at Route 68, is his words, "massive signalized intersection comprised of four multilane approaches and five exclusive turning lanes." And three of the five exclusive turning lanes are dedicated to entering and exiting Research Parkway. So I'm, I'm looking at your numbers with the trucks, thinking about that intersection that I occasionally go through, thinking, a truck doesn't go through the intersection the same speed that a car goes through. And, and in the morning and the afternoon, that's tough. You know, I've got a brand-new driver at my house, and when we were driving, I was like, oh, 68's a highway. It really, so I guess I'd need more information on the truck traffic distribution because our peer reviewer noted it wasn't included in yours. So again, if you're generating that much truck, that much parking for trucks, they're all going to be coming, my assumption is they're all coming through that area. 68 Research, that's already busy with just cars and sedans and SUVs. This is now tractor-trailer. So I'm going to be looking for more information, detailed response on that. Staying on trucks and traffic, the other one is Carpenter Lane. Now Carpenter Lane, my understanding is you're proposing to open it up for your other warehouse. And I think the terminology someone used, either in the, in the comments or verbally is, you know, the cut-through, I mean, that's residential, it leads up to a residential area. Other than a church, it's all residential north of yours, north of this proposed site. So I'm always concerned about the truck traffic mixing with passenger vehicles and also potentially mixing with school buses and egress. So I, I, I think that has to be discussed, and then it also looks as if, if I read it correctly, you're proposing potentially getting rid of the signal, the, the traffic light at the, at the site drive. Is that, do I understand that? Or is that...
That actually was a comment from your town traffic reviewer. We, we think it still should stay, and that may be the final resolution. That was a comment, just looking at the overall traffic, the amount of traffic that flowed from Bristol Myers will be greater than the amount of traffic that would come from the one warehouse. So the question now is it still warrant the need for a signal? You know, we think it's a, a positive thing, and, and that's part of the conversation that will go on. By the way, in Carpenter, we, we also agree, that's part of the conversations we've had already with the town engineer. I think BL Companies Fred Greenberg, who's well-recognized in traffic engineering, has had an initial conversation with the town's pick, and we're not looking to have any traffic take a right and head up Carpenter towards High Hill. I mean, none of that would make sense. So you're going to see the movements, you know, down towards Research. But again, that's all part of what we're working on.
And I real, I mean, I realize, it seems, no exaggeration, the water's a huge issue. And I, I get that, that's why you're still with wetlands, but it, but I, you wanted to start. I, I don't want to hold this because you wanted to start, so I just wanted to kind of share my thoughts. And I, I think that's, the other, the other piece of it, which, which is a concern, because I know is a big concern with Bristol Myers, is you talk about a guardhouse, correct? So I, I would like for someone to can guarantee will have something from the town legal traffic authority regarding emergency vehicle access for the fire department. It was a huge issue with Bristol Myers with the, the fact that it was a gated facility where they can get in, where they can get out, because it appears as if the truck cars, the truck lanes and the car lanes don't mix. So we've got to be concerned about emergency services. So it just, if you could make sure to reach out to them before, because sometimes we just get a one, one-word memo from them, but I think this is pretty massive. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to echo some similar comments to Mr. Fitzsimmons. This is a massive development, and, you know, the footprint, although the square footage is, you know, you said 975,000 square feet for Bristol Myers, a million for this, I mean, the, the footprint of the building is probably, I don't know, five or six times that of Bristol Myers, so, so... So, so the actual developed land is, is going to be much greater than, you know, what exists for, for Bristol Myers. Just a comment, so people understand this, this is a, you know, really large development. You know, you did reference the work in Middletown and that's the old, at the site where I used to work. So I'm very familiar. I saw the data center in the picture. It's still there. And I must commend, you know, the, the work because, you know, I know there was a lot of, you know, the data center has all the computers, all the equipment, and there was a lot of testing done up front to make sure none of the construction vibrations. And I don't know if there was any blasting, but, you know, nothing affected the data center. There was no outage caused by, you know, the development there. So that was great. One of the things I wanted to ask was, the way they demolished that building, and you're going to have to demolish the Bristol Myers building. They did it in, and I forget the exact details, and I'm hoping you can, you know, kind of fill me in on this. But they did it in an environmentally friendly method. The way they, I don't know, pulverized the cement. And I'm, you know, it seemed to work out really well. There wasn't, I know there were some massive dirt piles, but, you know, that demolition seemed to work pretty well. There wasn't a lot of, you know, sediment in the air. And you're right, there is a little really nice well in down in front, which, you know, was not impacted. So I think, you know, all the sediment and erosion controls, and I'm sure Inland Wellens is paying a lot of attention to this. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that, you know, that aspect will be, you know, met. But, you know, that demolition process, am I kind of touching on what happened there?
Can I respond?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it was, you know, they crushed things on site, pulverized them and mixed them in with materials and reused it on site. Obviously, everything was cleared from an environmental standpoint. Nothing, you know, there was no nasty bad stuff that was pulverized and put into the ground. You know, lead, asbestos, PCBs, anything like that was taken out. And then, you know, lightly misted, misting while they were demoing, so there was no dust flying all over. And the material was reused on site. And, you know, the intent here is to reuse that, those concrete and materials, crush them up and pulverize them and use them on site so that they're not being taken off. And it just minimizes trucks going off and it can be reused in, in the fill.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Just a couple other, other questions. I do agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons on the traffic. You know, I wasn't sure what was meant by the cut through, whether, you know, people were going to actually cut through the warehouse site to, you know, shortcut the road. But, you know, based on, you know, what was in some of the reports, I think the, the sight line, you know, for that, that Carpenter Lane entrance still needs to be, you know, tweaked and worked on. And, you know, there are some residential areas up there. There's, there's a school up there. You know, I don't know if there's a tenant yet. And I think the, you know, question on hours of operation is, is really key. You know, something, you know, that, you know, could impact that Carpenter Lane, you know, entrance. So I, you know, if possible, I'd like to get, you know, some more details on hours of operation and, you know, see, you know, what the best alternative is for, you know, the entrance. I assume there's not going to be a heliport on, on this site. Okay? I, I did like the, one of the things when I read through this, and we got a lot of material tonight. And, you know, we'll read through that for, for the next meeting. But I was prepared to come in here and say there were a lot of conditions of approval that I thought some of the items probably should have been, you know, worked out before we approved this and not really a condition of approval. Now, I, like I said, we got a lot of information tonight and I'll go through it for, for next meeting. You know, a fast read up here looks like several of those that I had in mind have, have already been resolved. So, you know, this, this comment may not be too, you know, too much more to, to deal with. But again, before tonight, I thought there were a few items to be worked out. One of the things I, and again, we got a lot of information tonight. I had some concerns with comments from Eric Kruger on, you know, some of the water and sanitary sewer setup. And he said that, you know, some of these items needs to be worked, you know, he made these conditions of approval. And this, these are one of the things I thought should be worked out ahead of time. And it may be at this point. So, you know, again, I'll go through what we got tonight and, you know, see if there's any, any other questions. And the, really the, I guess two more things. This is in a watershed, watershed protection district. And I guess we'll probably have to have a formal meeting of the, you know, committee to, yeah. And then I think the last thing, and it's, it's kind of a Town of Wallingford thing. But, you know, there's a comment from town attorney on, you know, the bonds we, we issue. And I was a little confused on that. And maybe we can, you know, work that out, you know, outside of this meeting. Just on how that's going to work. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Yes, Raka.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm just going to touch on a couple of items. Concur a lot with what Mr. Fitzsimmons brought up and he covered a lot of it. So I'll just touch on a couple of things. The peer review or somewhere in one of these documents, I read that there's possible consideration for redesigning Carpenter Lane. I don't know if that's a thought or...
There's, there's some discussion already between the traffic engineers about re-alining, re-grading.
Yeah, re-grading a section of it, lowering it to improve the site distance.
How about winding? I'm familiar with that.
A sliver, but not anything major. I think it's like four feet because there's a potential median that might go in the middle. We're working out details now between the traffic, our traffic engineer, the peer reviewer and Rob. So that's what we'll have finalized by the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's one of my bigger concerns is, is the semi-traffic coming onto that road. And I know you, you said that it'd be directed towards Research. And I don't know if in the final design, if there's going to be a change or if that can be more prominent.
We'll show you the curb cut. I mean, we're restricting, trucks can't go up Carpenter. They have to go to Research.
Right, the way it's angled?
I mean, there's, it's a right out, the lower, doesn't show it as good, but there's this, this lower cut here for the trucks. They come out this way. There's going to be a median here. They can't make a left turn and go up Carpenter. They're restricted from coming down it or up it. I mean, from, from the east, they have to go in and out through Research.
Gotcha. Yep.
And there's holes in place.
I didn't touch that. Great. Again, I saw, or I read in here, there's some limited access for emergency services, police, fire to, I think...
Go between the two warehouses.
Is it between the two warehouses?
There's, there's an existing driveway there now. Right now, there's this existing driveway in the same geometry here, you know, the same location. Because it goes up to the cup building, the power building. This road is going to stay, you know, we're going to rework it, but it's going to stay in its same location and be there for emergency access between the two warehouses.
Will they have access to all sides of the building? I imagine so.
Um, yeah, they do. I mean, we, Bill's been meeting with fire. Have you gotten any feedback that you want to share?
Yeah, no, I've, I've met with the fire department a couple of times, walked him through the layouts, walked him through the different, different aspects, how, how things would circulate, show them their fire truck movements. They've seemed to be pretty happy with circulation. And they were, they were fine with the access. They have almost 360-degree access on both of these, with the exception of a little bit of an area here and there. And both the fire marshal and the fire chief did not have any, any concerns there. The other emergency access that we're going to maintain, there's an access that runs along, along right here.
Right here, this gray line.
And that's there today. So that, that will be maintained as well. So they will have a, a access point here. They'll have the main access here. They'll have this access to connect the two sites. And then they'll also have an access off of Carpenter in the, in the event that they need to, so.
Great. And the other thing would be residential concerns. I see a few letters here from residents pertaining to possible well contaminations. And there's a comment in here from our director of health. Also comments, of course, about noise. We went through that some time ago with another facility in town. Refrigerated trucks, refrigerations are running constant. And I think, I think you're very familiar with that.
Familiar.
And then one resident has concerns for biochemical hazards during the demolition process of Bristol Myers and what they may or may not have been their lab.
The majority of the site has already been cleaned.
Cleaned or cleared or...
There's areas that are already vacant, like the F wings vacant, the vibranium, however you pronounce it, in the basement vacant, cleaned, the equipment's gone.
Okay.
That, you know, there's been environmental, you know, investigations.
Investigation.
Yeah, I mean, every, everything.
I don't know if that's in here, any...
They're supposed to leave the property with no environmental issues. And if something comes up or there is something, any, it's got to be legally disposed of. But, but, but there's not supposed to be anything left. I mean, everything so far has been cleaned up and moved out in accordance with the law.
Is there, is there any, Casey, is there any documentation on that or from Bristol Myers or...
I don't have any documentation of that. What I can tell you is that I spoke with the building official about that. And during demolition, he's going to require a pretty detailed amount of documentation. He actually said, I believe he said that he would require CDC documentation, that, that there weren't any issues with the vibranium. And that they also during demolition will require the, the standard kind of testing of the materials that are being demolished. So I asked him if he needed that as a condition of approval from the commission and he said, no, he had, he does that under his own authority. So, but we are all very well aware of that and on top of making sure of that.
If I might, Mr. Commissioner, we have other members of our team who are, are well-versed in this area and perhaps can even expand on that answer for you.
I'm Jeff Checkaway with the ownership group.
Good.
You'll see that on the mic.
Say it again through the mic.
Jeff Checkaway with the ownership group. We work with them as the owner of project management team. Will be in charge of overseeing demolition and likely all the site construction, building construction potential here on the property. So, you know, in our contact with Bristol Myers, Squibb, they have a process that's ongoing to clean up the entire facility. I know that they've been working with Clean Harbors on that. And, you know, essentially, you know, towards the end of the project, towards the end of the year when they're vacating, they'll supply us with a, essentially a clean bill of health on all the areas. And like Michelle had mentioned, they've already cleaned the entire F wing. I don't know if you can kind of show on there, the, the top wing there has been completely cleaned out of the lab operations. And also their varium space, which exists under the other four wings of the building have been cleaned. And we, we fully intend to, you know, have a demolition survey for asbestos-containing materials. We'll have a clean bill of health and, you know, perform any necessary abatement prior to obtaining the demolition permit.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, talk.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Yes, Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple. I'm pretty familiar with the area. I live in that area and I travel from that in 68 to my office, which is on the Cheshire side of 68 every day. That being said, one of the things that happened recently is Eversource trimmed their trees from the inside out. So there's a lot of barrier that may have been there previously that is now lost. They did a pretty extensive amount of trimming. So any type of noise insulation that may have been there is pretty far gone. Bristol Myers, I don't know if it's part of their power plant or part of their other operations. Usually on the weekends runs a test of what I believe is either a generator or a conveyor of some sort. And that noise can be heard all the way back onto Tammy Hill, which actually runs perpendicular to High Hill. So, I mean, it's, the noise really travels. So, so noise and the noise concerns that Mr. Fitzsimmons raised is definitely a big concern as far as trucks coming in and out. What's, what's that going to be like and what type of insulation is going to be there to, you know, moderate that, that piece? I do have some other questions as far as how the property is going to be used. Is there a percentage of the lot that's going to be used as a drop lot where full trailers are going to be loaded and then sit for a period of time to be picked up? Are trucks going to bobtail, meaning are they going to drop a trailer and then take the cab out? Or are they going to drop a trailer, pick up a new trailer and leave? I mean, these are all traffic issues that I don't expect an answer tonight. But I think we just would like to have a little bit more questions going on. And, and answers to these questions as far as the thorough put level. Is the warehouse going to be stacked or stocked, I'm sorry, or racked? Because that's going to relate to how fast these trailers are going to turn over and how fast they're going to come in and out. I think that's really most of my questions and concerns as far as the usage goes. Traffic would be the last real concern that, that I have. When Eversource was doing their gas lines and they were, they had blocked off significant parts of 68 in sections. And generally, it was a one-lane block off. That bottlenecked and caused major, major traffic delays. Beyond which what me not being a traffic expert would have expected the bottleneck to be, given that little amount of, of backup. The light turning onto Research Parkway has two left turn lanes before, I believe, 9:30. And then after 9:30, it changes to two green lights going straight and only one left turn lane. So the question would be, does that timing impact the traffic? And is that, there a possibility for the timing to be adjusted? Is it not going to be an issue? I, again, I don't know. Again, the hours of operation of the warehouse and the major times for the ins and outs are going to be a pretty big question going on there. I did think your presentation was very thorough as far as prohibiting the left-hand turns onto, onto Carpenter. That was very thorough. But just so you know, that neighborhood back there, if there's an issue on 68 or trees down on the front of, of High Hill Road, the only access... the only access to that neighborhood is either coming down the back end of sixty-eight and up through the back of Tammy Hill or coming up Carpenter. So if Carpenter's cut off, there's a possibility that the whole neighborhood could, you know, in a storm, in a storm or in an emergency, be completely cut off. So, um, the less impact on the traffic on Carpenter, uh, would be better in my opinion. Other than that, I think that's all my concerns, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't really have too many questions, uh, tonight. I'll reserve my questions, uh, to, uh, for a later meeting and after I've had a chance to digest all this new information that we received tonight. I, I think you get a flavor for what the concerns are up here. I, you know, we in Wallingford, um, have gone through, uh, a situation with a food distributor, um, and residents next door. I don't think any members up here want to make a decision that results in a similar situation. Uh, we wanna avoid that if we can. Uh, and that's why I think we're so concerned about what protections there will be um, uh, for, uh, for the residents, um, in that area. Not gonna ask you who, um, but I assume that if you're proposing to build structures this large, that you have a tenant in mind. You've heard a lot of members up here, um, raise concerns about the hours of operation, the number of trucks, the, the amount of traffic. Are those answers that you can give us? I mean, a lot of that is gonna be dependent upon the tenant and the tenant's proposed use. I mean, are those answers that you can give us? Are, are those, uh, is that information you can give us? Uh, not with respect to the tenant and who the tenant is, but with respect to the amount of traffic?
Yeah. As with any development, there are certain standards for traffic. There's the ITE standards. So what your traffic engineer will do, what Mr. Baltromidus will do, what our traffic engineer will do, will look at those standards for this sort of building, recognizing that although, and I'm not aware of any tenant, they haven't told me. But, um, I, I would suspect that this is, you know, this is a, a development that looks like something for an Amazon, Google type, hopefully, I think, for, for the applicants. But at the end of the day, there are standards for the truck traffic and for the car traffic. I mean, someone said to me, for example, anybody who takes a right out of this site, a passenger car to go up Carpenter, will never do it again, because it's not, it's not the, the best movement. So, um, all kidding aside, I mean, th- there is, there are standards. So that, you're right, we may not have a tenant at the November meeting where we can say to you, here's the hours of operation, here's the number of trucks. This is how much space they've taken. It'd be wonderful. Um, but what the traffic engineers do is they use the standards based upon their analysis throughout the country, you know, what sort of traffic is generated by the size. And, um, usually those standards are pretty conservative. In other words, when you do post-opening traffic reviews, they generally are lesser traffic than those standards call for because they need to be conservative for a town or a state to rely upon. And so at the end of the day, we're gonna have all that information for you. And I, you know, our expectation is, is that, um, you have hired an expensive but very good traffic engineer. When we saw who Mr. Baltromidus selected, um, we were pleased because it's somebody who understands this sort of project. And that's important for you. And, um, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. But we, our expectation is that the team that you have and the team that we have are gonna be able to make this happen.
Okay. And, and that answers the traffic part of it, but some of the other concerns are, you know, how long are the trucks gonna be running? When are they gonna be running? How many trucks may be using this facility at one time? Are they gonna be refrigerated? Because refrigerated trucks cause a lot more sound, uh, or, or noise than unrefrigerated trucks. Um, and, and so that, those types of concerns are tenant-specific, I think. Um, i- i- because it depends on, you know, what the tenant plans on, on using the property for and how often and how long and what the hours of operation are gonna be. And, and so I'm hopeful that you will be able to provide answers to those, uh, to those questions. Um, and again, I'll, I'll just reserve my, my actual questions to, to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, you sure? All right. You know, I, I, I think you've heard the commissioners, um, you know, the sentiment of traffic, signage, noise, hours of operations, even demolition, what's the demolition plan? So there, there's quite a bit of questions. Obviously, we would expect you to, to have back to us. But I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Casey if she has any, uh, comments that she'd like to, uh,
Yeah, um, yeah, I just wanted to talk about, um, some of the concerns I had and some of the issues that have been raised tonight. Um, and kind of where, where we are. Um, you saw my initial comment letter. It was probably my longest comment letter ever. It's a, it's a substantial project. There, you know, this is, this is a big project. Um, it's in a site that's in our watershed and has lots of wetlands and has, um, significant cut and fills with, um, significant retaining walls. And the applicant and, and applicant's team have done a lot of work with me to, um, get me to the comfort level I needed to be at with some of these things. Um, and I think to try to, um, provide you some of the information that you needed to get to a certain comfort level. And we've also worked pretty hard to, um, develop some conditions that I think will address, um, a lot of those concerns. Um, and I, so I kind of wanted to start with the last comment, like kind of Mr. Heinz's comments and Mr. Allenson's comments and some of the other comments. Even if they think they know who their tenant is, that can always change. So you are not approving a particular tenant and you can't approve specific functioning components. So we, there is no guarantee in terms of, some of these things, just, uh, as much as I'm sure they'll, they'll try to provide with, with some information, we shouldn't approve it with the expectation that those things are set in stone. I think, I think the thing to come at in terms of that is what's the underlying concern? And is there a condition of approval associated with that underlying concern that's appropriate and can address the concern? So if the concern is, um, and that's a lot of what I've, like, kind of the process I've, I've tried to go through in a lot of this too. Um, so I think if the concern is noise, then I think we would look to the applicant to tell us how do they plan to address potential noise concerns from trucks in the parking lot? Or are there potential noise concerns given, um, the distance from the property lines, given the fact that they are sort of in a hole? I mean, I, I think that will help to some degree, but I'm not a noise expert. So how much will that help and what conditions associated with that would be appropriate? So I think that's the kind of thing that we would look, um, because that's one thing that we had touched on, but we hadn't gotten into in any detail is the noise. Um, so hopefully for next meeting, they can be sort of prepared, um, with a condition in relation to that. And the same thing with the traffic. So, um, I will tell you that a big staff concern and something we've all talked about a lot, you're gonna hear about more next month because, um, it was one of, I, I know it's one of Mr. Baltromidus's sort of primary concerns and, and it was one of mine is we do not want any tractor trailer truck ever to accidentally take a right onto Carpenter Lane and end up in the High Hill Road area, right? I mean, that, that's just not something that we wanna happen. And so, um, that's something we've talked about from the beginning. That's something that, I mean, I, obviously their design shows. I think for next month, um, based on Mr. Baltromidus's comments, you might anticipate some, um, cha- some changes to what's proposed over there. But, um, that is something that, um, has been talked about at length. And I think you'll, you'll ha- hopefully have, um, because we all, that's something that was very important to all of us is that we wanna make sure there are answers in terms of protecting those areas. Um, and the same thing with traffic in general. I mean, this is, so this is your I-five zone. This is a zone that's designed to take advantage of the fact that ninety-one is right there. And that means that it's designed for users that have jet, that are high traffic generators. Um, Route sixty-eight has been largely designed for that. Research Parkway was designed for that. Um, that being said, there are a lot of trucks here, um, and there are a lot of cars here. And, um, so we wanna make sure that, um, and that's why the peer review and having a, a strong peer reviewer was so important for this. Um, the other thing I wanted to kind of ask the applicant, I think I know the answer, but, um, there is an OSTA permit associated with the Bristol Myers Squibb development. And, um, that's where the, um, signalization off of sixty-eight onto Research Parkway, that's how that's determined. So I, do you have to go back to OSTA even, even if you're not increasing your actual traffic generation? Can I, or do you know if you need a new OSTA part? Yeah?
Yeah, yes, because of the change of use.
Okay. So I think that's something that we will, I talked to, to Mr. Baltromidus about this. I mean, that we will look to the state, obviously, and that's what the state will do, um, is look at the signalizing at that intersection because I think that's an important thing, um, to consider. So, um, I just kind of wanted to, but again, I think, um, in terms of, in terms of the noise, in terms of the traffic, um, I think the question of is, are there things we can do to mitigate the concerns? I think that's, that's kind of where, um, where we are with a lot of this. And so to that, and I just wanted to talk about a few other things that I, um, that I had raised and kind of how they've been addressed, um, and that you'll see. Um, I did provide you for next month with some sort of draft potential conditions, things that we've agreed to, to address, um, a lot of the concerns. Um, so I think one, another big thing that they talked about, um, that's been a big concern and important from the town standpoint is, um, this is, this feeds McKenzie Reservoir, this property. So it, uh, has potential to impact public drinking water and we wanna make sure that there are no negative impacts. They talked at length in their presentation about, um, a lot of the effort that has been, been put into. And that's been a, a town water and sewer, myself, environmental planner, um, engineering. We've all had a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations about that, particularly demo, during demolition. Um, because there's gonna be, you know, exposed site during demolition and, um, and during construction. And we wanna make sure that, um, all the, all the safety valves are in place. Um, so, um, some conditions associated with that are having, um, you'll see in a couple of different places in documents, there's recommended, um, a third-party, um, inspector to be on the site. Um, that's not something we normally require, um, but that we're looking to require in this case. And the applicant has agreed to, um, to have the inspector on site for sedimentation and erosion control. So that would be somebody that basically works, uh, reports to the town, reports to us. And if there are issues or there are things that need to be done, um, or concerns, um, that, that they would report those back to us and they would work with the contractor. I mean, that's an added lever, level of protection in addition to their design protections and their, their own staff that will be sort of overseeing, um, those concerns. Um, so I think that's, that's been an important thing for all of us to agree to. Um, you'll also see in your packets of information and in your recommended potential conditions, um, there's a contingency plan. So if there's a problem, if there's a storm, um, what happens? So who gets called? Who's in charge of what, what happens if there's, if there's a big storm? Because we've had, we've had a lot of big storms lately and we've had some problems with some of the construction sites in town. And, and we wanna make sure that's not, um, going to happen here because that is a sen- this is a sensitive site. Um, so you, again, you'll see a lot of that reflected, um, in those suggestions. Uh, and I just did wanna differentiate. So because it's watershed and not Aquifer, you can approve it as the Planning and Zoning Commission. You don't have to wear that separate Aquifer hat. Um, so you, so you don't, um, but it is, there is a watershed regulation in your, um, in your regulations. And so you approve that as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that includes some conditions, um, that, in terms of what can be done. So, um, in terms of what types of hazardous materials can be stored on site and how they can be stored. And then also what kind of chemicals can be used, like for parking lots, for snowstorms and things like that. Um, you can't use sodium chloride. And, um, another thing that I, um, had a lot of questions about was the grading. There's a lot of grading, um, and the retaining walls. Um, so they've talked at length about that tonight, I think. Did you give them the spec, the spec information?
Yeah, we handed that.
Oh, you gave, did you give it to me?
That can handle it? Oh, we have, yeah, we didn't hand that in yet.
Okay. So there's some information about the retaining walls and how they're constructed that I had asked for. Um, and you'll see again, I, I am suggesting a condition that the property owner of record, um, maintain responsibility for maintenance of those retaining walls, you know, whoever that is, over time. Because I wanted to make sure that, um, because with, those are big walls. So I wanted to make sure that we had somebody kind of keeping an eye on them so that we wouldn't have any failures or anything like that. Couple of other things, um, the, uh, okay, the, um, phasing, you'll see some comments in there about phasing. Um, town staff have pretty much all taken a pretty strong position on that, that we do feel that there should be some level of phasing, of organized phasing to the construction in the sense that, um, we have concerns about having the whole site kind of opened up and exposed at once. The, uh, we've had conversations about whether, you know, how realistic that is in terms of how the construction on the site occurs and what some potential is. So you'll see, um, in my recommended potential conditions, um, condition number, potential condition number four would be, or recommended condition number four would be, um, final construction sequence and project phasing to be provided by the site contractor, um, to the Planning and Zoning Department. And I should say Planning and Zoning Department and Engineering Department for approval fired prior to commencement of any work. Um, any concerns or issues may be brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, under no circumstances shall more than blank acres. So that's something that, um, I'm looking for a recommendation from Mr. Baltromidus for next month for an exact number. Um, I mean, it's sort of deep recommended standards is five acres, but that just can't work for what, for the way they need to do the site. So we're looking at something a lot larger than that, um, for what's, what will be exposed. And then we're also including the condition that if an, if an issue arises, we would want the ability to, so if the contractor's doing stuff he's not supposed to do, we would want the ability, working with that site inspector that will be hired to be able to like tamp that in a little bit. And I think that's something that everybody's agreeable to. It's just a matter of deciding, I think, what, what the exact number is and, and what will, what they can reasonably work with in terms of the exact number. Um, and, and there may be, I mean, the applicant may wanna talk about that. I know that's something that there's been a little bit of a difference of opinion. I think we've, um, tried to find something, some wording and some, something realistic that can work for everybody but makes the town still feel like we're protected. And then, um, okay, the only, the, just a couple more things. Um, parking, they talked about parking. Um, I did recommend a condition, um, when, if and when you are ready to move forward. That, so, so there are parking spaces, vehicle, car parking spaces in addition above what your requirements are. And, um, I sort of, if that's what their particular tenant needs, then that's what their particular tenant needs. But I don't, I'd like to reduce impervious surface where we can. So my recommended condition was that the hundred and sixteen spaces that are still over be designated as, um, future parking to be constructed if, if needed by the tenant. So I'm not suggesting that it can't be constructed or that it won't be constructed, but that if it doesn't need to be constructed, it's the, it's called out in the plan on a way, in a way such that it doesn't have to be constructed. So that they could work that out with their tenant, they could verify that to us, and then it may or And then it may or, may or may not get built depending on what the needs of the tenant are. And presumably that's best for everybody, because I, I also presume they don't want, there's no reason for them to build parking that they don't need. But there's no easy answer to that. And then I also wanted to talk about impact to neighboring properties. So that's something that we also are very sensitive to and have tried to be very aware of, whether that's in terms of groundwater and well, potential well impacts, blasting impacts, you know, things like glare and visual and all of that. So I, I think the applicant touched on a lot of those things, but you'll also see some, again, sort of agreed to conditions I've suggested that include a pre-blast survey and pre-blast water testing to be provided to properties within fifteen hundred feet of any blasting that's going to occur. So that would provide a baseline in terms of what the water quality is, what the rate for the wells is and what the, basically they go in and they look at the structural components. And so it provides a baseline for everyone, so that if there were any kind of issue or potential issue that someone thought had occurred as a result of, and then there's monitoring of the blasting that occurs during the blasting. And then that way, there, there's a comparison rate. So that if there was something to occur as a result of the blasting, that could be demonstrated and that there would be a responsibility to remediate whatever the problem that's created was. So if there is some kind of problem created within one of those properties as a result of the blasting, the applicant would be responsible, or the applicant would be responsible to address that problem. And in terms of lands, you know, we looked, we talked a lot about landscaping to try to protect some of those neighboring properties, protect what their visuals are. I'm well aware that, of the C L M P clearing, they, they do a lot of clearing. So there's kind of a bit, big bear spot in between High Hill Road and the, the property. And that's why we talked about what perimeter trees would be kept in order to keep some of that screening. And you'll also see a comment from health, the health director in your packets, from Steve Savitelli. And that also talks about his requirements for what information he's going to require, again, to verify that there won't be any impacts to groundwater quantity or quality, or well water quantity or quality for the adjacent properties. So there are conditions in place to try to, to make sure that everyone's protected and that there's not going to be any negative impacts from that standpoint. So I know, I think he's in conversation with the applicant's design representatives. And that's something that I know he's, he's, he would look to have a formal, I, I know there's a comment in here, but to have a final comment from you for next month. And that's, so for next month, I think that all of the, the departments, engineering, the traffic engineer, the health department, the water and sewer, the, the, the idea is that they would be in places where they're comfortable to recommend like one set of conditions of approval to you, because you have a lot of back and forth documents from all of us. So that whether it's, you know, next month or whenever, that, that they would be in a position after having these conversations to have one set of recommended conditions. And then obviously, whatever you feel you're comfortable with. And then finally, there were a couple of things that I, that I need you to decide or the applicant needs you to decide. There are things in the regulations that are sort of at the discretion of the commission. I'm going to start with the easiest one first. So in, in the design, you may have noticed that there is a retaining, some of the retaining walls, you might have seen there were a lot of comments from me about heights of retaining walls and setbacks and compliance with the setbacks and things like that. One of the retaining walls is below the eight feet within the front yard along Carpenter Lane, but it does extend in towards Carpenter Lane. So that is a required landscaped area. And I needed determination from the commission as to whether or not that's okay with you. I mean, we have approved walls within landscaped areas before. I don't have a concern about that. But that, again, I think is something that would be appropriate for you to decide whether or not you're comfortable with that within the landscaped area. The second one is mulch is proposed for interior, for the interior landscaped islands and in, in the interior of the parking lots. And that's something that is at the discretion of the commission. So that's something that you'll need to approve if it's mulch over grass. I mean, you've approved that in lots of places. When it's a smaller, when it's, when it's a smaller, less green site, I raise concerns about that, because I like to see some, some grass and some, some green. But there's a lot of green staying on this site, so I'm not concerned about it in this area. And then the last thing would be the daycare. And I don't know if you want to raise that issue tonight. Okay, I'll let you talk about that.
You want me to wait till you're finished?
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's a question about the, the utility service for the daycare and how the lines are getting served. So I'll let them present on, on what their proposal for that is. But obviously, this still needs to be, you still have wetlands or they're still waiting for approval from the inland wetlands commission and to work out some of their conditions that they might be comfortable with. And so what I added to what we talked about, based on what we talked about tonight, what I added as potential conditions was, I think we should add recommendations number one through eight contained in the letter from George Cotter, dated October third, twenty eighteen. And then compliance with the signage regulations, which is a given, they have to do that. And they have to get a separate sign permit, but we always like to put that in writing. And then potential conditions associated with noise and/or hours of operation.
Thank you. Casey, just, and I, I know I heard it, but I just want to make sure from a procedural perspective, we are going, when we get to the point to make the decision, the decision will be through planning and zoning. We don't have to go into the aquifer protection
Right.
commission at all.
Right. So they're in the watershed, not the aquifer, not the, not the designated aquifer protection area. They're in the designated watershed protection area, which doesn't have its own separate, you, you don't wear a separate hat for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Same idea, though.
Exactly. We just got this document. So I just want to make sure it's read into the minutes for, through our secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to include in our minutes a anchor wall descriptive material.
Thank you. I, I know there was a question on the daycare center.
Yes, the, the daycare center that's right here, if you just turn around for a minute, is powered through a path here. There's a path between the wetlands where power comes up from the power plant. So obviously, when the power plant is decommissioned and taken apart, there's no power electricity to the, to the daycare. So we have to provide alternate electrical service. And this is going to be accomplished based on available power on the street, and we want to provide it overhead. And I believe that the town wants, typically wants things underground, but there's nothing in the area that's underground that we can, that we can connect to right now. Where's the closest?
Yes. Yeah. So right now.
It's overhead. So we want to bring it in overhead.
Yep. Right now, the, the power for the facilities that run on this side of research are all off of Thorpe Ave. So the, the power lines go through, there's the cul-de-sac where Thorpe Ave used to touch out onto sixty-eight years ago. When they did all the improvements, they, they put the cul-de-sac. They have Carini Drive, which, which runs right in between the food bank, right in this location. It tees up with Thorpe Ave, roughly in this area here. So what we would like to do, we've been working with the power company, is to run a pole line down Carini and then across and then right to our site drive. So it's, it's a little portion here on, on research. And then this would go down to Carini and into Thorpe. We've been working with a couple of the members of the power company with Ed Rizzo. They, they wrote up a quick, they had a quick sketch to kind of close that loop. But we wanted to discuss that too today, to see, you know, what the thoughts were.
So the regulation requires undergrounding of all unit utilities, except there are a couple of exceptions. One of the exceptions is that is an extension of a line on an existing town or state road by the Wallingford Electric Division, if approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The electric division, I mean, I, I think they're, they will probably have something in writing for you for next month. They can do it, they will do it. I don't think they have a particular position, you know, one way or the other. I will tell you that I do have some reservations about this. Just because I, I think that my, I think that you, there's something accomplished by having underground lines. And I think that has been accomplished in that area. I think there's a certain aesthetic kind of business park appeal that's been accomplished in that area. And there's a certain look that's been accomplished in that area. And I do have some concerns about making this one exception. The, the flip side of that is that there are already, so I did some driving around to, to think about this a little bit. There are already above ground lines on Carpenter Lane, on Thorpe. I mean, there's the high tension lines through the C L M P easement. I mean, those are hard to ignore. So there, there is some precedent for it in the area. I, but I think that's kind of not the direction we've been trying to move in. So it's really at the commission's discretion. I think tonight, I'm not sure if the applicant is looking for a, an answer or maybe just some input. But ultimately, if they wanted to pursue it, you, that would need to be decided by the commission.
So what do you think commissioners? Yes, Mr. Allinson.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would at least want to see some sort of, something that says this is necessary or there's no other alternative or the, any, any underground electrical alternative would be so cost prohibitive. I'd like to see something as to why this is necessary to make the exception.
I'd have to agree with that. I think if we went with overhead, we'd be going kind of backwards in what we're trying to maintain and achieve. One, one thought is that the power line or the power supply already runs from the old power plant that's being raised. Can't a substation be implemented there and tied into building one? And bring the power in that way and still utilize the, the power lines that are in there, underground?
The difficulty is that, again, you're raising the buildings, as you point out. So there isn't a building, any other building to provide the power to the daycare. So the question is, do the daycare have to be shut down? I mean, that really is the issue. Because at the end, there's a couple of issues. Number one is, the reason we're asking, we're not making the request arbitrarily, you've got wetlands. So of course, if you're going to put the, the line underground, it's another wetlands issue that we have to address that hadn't been anticipated. Number two is the timing. If the building gets raised, you know, at what time, when you do work underground, is this at a time when, again, the buildings are raised, no power is being brought to, to that daycare, you're going to end up having to, to close it down? I mean, I think that's really what the alternatives are. So the, the contemplation was, as Casey points out, you have, if, if this was virgin land and everything was underground, it'd be a really hard, even a request for us to make. But I think at the end of the day, it's, it is somewhat consistent. We were, I think we're fortunate to some extent as an applicant that we've got a location where this would not be inconsistent with the, the power provided in the neighborhood. And again, it's something that the town electric division indicates, you know, can be provided and is, I, I don't want to say they're supportive, but they recognize that, that it is an alternative.
Yes, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question. Are, are we, are we clear that this proposal would fall under that exception?
I, I'm just looking at the language here and I'm not.
Yeah. Well, I think it would, because the actual line extension does have to be done by the electric division. It would, because it's along a town road. So it's, it's normally when this hap, or this is, I can only think of a couple other times this has happened. And typically, it's, it's the electric division is look, is pursuing it, sort of. In, in this particular case, it would be there, them doing the extension. So I think that technically, under the, the language of the regulation, I think, I think it would. Because that's what they had to be doing. They'd do an actual line extension down the road, across Thorpe, and then tie in. And then I, would you underground from research to the daycare? Or no? Would you underground from research to the daycare? Like from the right-of-way to the building, where it would be all above ground?
Right now, the way the utility company showed it was, it was all above ground, bringing a pole right to the daycare.
Yeah. I mean, that, that is
driveway.
not usually what we have happen.
Yeah. I, I mean, my view of it, and for, for what it's worth, probably not too much, but you know, I, I think that's kind of, that's stretching that exception broader than it's intended. It, it seems to me that that exception applies where, as, as you point out, the, the electric division is looking to do it on its own, not where a third party is seeking the extension and the electric division is willing to do it for their benefit, which it sounds like that would be the, the situation here. I mean, if, if that, if that were the, the intent of that exception, then we could grant an exception anytime that there was an extension on a town road, which would be pretty much probably eighty, ninety percent of, of the roads here in, in the town. It seems to me that that would really require a, a variance, if that's what, what they were looking to do. But that's just my, my thoughts, looking at, at this quickly. But I guess we have to decide that tonight, one way or another.
I, I don't know if the applicant is looking for an answer on that tonight or a sort of temperature feel. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Casey. I, I don't think that you can vote on anything tonight, because wetlands hasn't voted yet. So we were trying to take the temperature. We're trying to, you know, get a consensus as best we can from you. So we have some directions we move forward to next month, whether it's the mulch, the wall with the net landscaping area, or whether it's the overhead power service to the existing daycare. And again, recognizing that the power source now comes from that plant, that generated plant under all the wetlands. And we're leaving, again, lines in place, et cetera, so it doesn't impact the wetlands. It's just another, it's another issue.
Just to, to comment again on that, the, the lines are remaining in place, correct?
They're getting cut and capped.
Cut and capped?
Yes.
So if they're remaining in place, why can't they be reutilized? Like with a substation up by building one, you tie in, your power is coming into building one, branch out from there to the substation, reuse the lines that run, that are already running in place. I know you're probably thinking, well, not thinking, but the goal is to, to keep the daycare open throughout the I know you're probably thinking, well, not thinking, but the goal is to, to keep the daycare open throughout the, the raising that was relative demolition. Is that right?
Yeah, ultimately that, that's what we're looking to do is to, to not lose power to the daycare facility. Um, when we raise the building, um, that's why we've sort of been in talks with, uh, the Wallingford Electric Division for, for some time now. Um, you know, when we, when we found out there wasn't power available on research, uh, that's where the, uh, overhead line solution came through. And, you know, I think one of the bigger concerns is, is not just providing power, but, um, we'd have no way of maintaining the life safety, the, the fire alarm system and, um, heat, uh, those types of things that are sort of required for the building not to go.
Right.
Into a, you know, a mothballed state.
So, so reusing the lines that are already in place is not, i- it could be a viable option. And what I'm thinking is, can the power company provide temporary service to that building while demolition is going on? And then make the switch over so you can, you know, so we're not impacting with the area and it's reverting back to overhead power lines? Just, you have to give me an answer, but just, just trying to spitball here.
I would say go back and try to figure out maybe some options. You know, it doesn't sound like we're too, uh, warm on that one for you, but you know, I think if you come up with some options, I, how about the, the mulch and, and the grass?
That's fine.
It's fine with me. And mulch is good. Was there another one?
Less than eight feet.
Oh, the, the eight foot.
Zero to eight.
That's fine.
It's fine. Uh, it, commissioners? Yeah, we're fine with that one.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so the, like, the electrical to the daycare aside, I mean, I think we've come a really far, long way in terms of making, like, getting this project to a place where I think there's a comfort level. And I think the applicant and his representatives have done a lot of work to address a lot of our concerns. And I, um, I, I think that's important moving forward.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Please raise your hand. Start over here on the left. Just for the record, name and where you're from.
Hello, my name's Deborah Labutus. I'm at twelve sixty Barnes Road. My concerns, which are to me very important, the noise level on Research Parkway and the traffic. I mean, I go on Research Parkway to work every day. It's, it's getting busier. And in the winter, near Christmas, you have Amazon trucks, you have the, the post office trucks. If you add more trucks, it's going to take me a lot longer to get to work. My other concern, I appreciate that they want to test our water, my well water, is very concerning to me. What if something happens? We cannot tap into city water. I need water, so who's going to help us with that? It's a major concern.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? All right, over here.
Jack Aragoni, eighteen Martin Trail. I was here a week ago at the inland water commission meeting to support the homeowners adjacent to this project and to share a couple of observations at Spring Lake. I heard that this commission and the inlands are working together. Hope, and I, and hopefully you reviewed that meeting. I won't repeat too much. I reviewed last meet, week's meeting too. I forgot a lot of what I wanted to say, so is why I'm just reading. About three pages, big print. I talked about skating and the ice cover, but did not explain fully why I notice. I am a member of the United States Speed Skating Association. The catchphrase is from pond to podium, it has meaning. Indoor ice is expensive and limited. Members around the state report outdoor conditions. I pay, I pay attention to the ice on Spring Lake. This one's special to me, the podium. I've skated with Olympians. Most recently, Ryan from Connecticut did make it to the Korean Games earlier this year. I will repeat this though. I'm not seeing the ice cover on the north end of Spring Lake like I used to. Last week, this item I totally missed. The lake now has two brooks flowing into it, both under Hampton Trail. I can remember three changes made to get water under instead of over Hampton Trail. And each one worked for a while. I was not sure what was done and when, so I checked with the engineering department last week. In nineteen seventy-seven, on the west side of the lake, a thirty-six and a forty-two inch pipe are shown. We couldn't be sure what was there before. In two thousand and two, catch basins and another pipe under the road were added. In two thousand and fourteen, a couple of hundred feet to the east of the mapped brook, two fifteen inch pipes were added, again, to control water over Hampton Trail. Spring Lake is getting runoff faster. Sand and melting material that I spoke of last week is getting to the lake faster. I learned from last week's meeting of at least a thirty inch pipe is used to get water off of Bristol Myers property. I question what other sources are filling all the pipes at Hampton Trail. It's a point, the point is a lot of water is coming from somewhere upstream. You can see it at Hampton Trail. A positive comment about Bristol Myers, except for the start and finish of their time here in Wallingford, mostly was pretty good. And I guess they had a strong ES and H plan, being a large company. As a mechanical engineer involved with the support of flight and ground turbo machinery, I can say that that dual purpose power plant was very energy efficient. And I had hoped they would continue to use it. Some of the engine parts from that power plant may be repaired right here in Wallingford. Now, the real reason that I even decided to talk last week and this week, it's about the folks adjacent to the project. At an earlier meeting that I watched on TV, these suggestions were made to the people that voiced concern about blasting. They should get their well checked, I agree, or they may need a lawyer, but worse, they may have to move. And I was sitting at home thinking, wow, this just doesn't seem right. What can I do? We know prior blasting caused problems with adjacent wells. We're being told there won't be a problem this time, but what if there is a problem? We do know who's doing the blasting, blasting. You should have this requirement for approval of this application to correct any problem due to blasting, whatever it takes. No one should have to move and there is city water nearby. As I mentioned last week, the distance to the city water for them is less than the length of their new building. It's been disgusting. I am off script here. They should be asking about noise. I believe that's been covered. And you didn't say it, but remember Thurston Fruit Foods. I followed this for the last eight months, more so for the last three. And all I can come up with in my mind is there must be more to this. Where's this going next? I can't imagine a building this size just because. Who really owns it? How will it be used now and in the future? I've said enough about that. I hope you can protect the neighbors near this project. I urge and also urge you to be careful and take your time with all of the I ninety-one, Route sixty-eight interchange decisions for all the people of Wallingford. This is our watershed area. It will be hard to correct. After listening to tonight's meeting and really getting a feel for the size of this building, I was looking at it and thinking, this looks like a container ship. You were just talking about the power to the daycare. I wonder where they get their heat from? Is it from that power plant also? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Joe Mira from Economic Development. Uh, it's been pointed out more than once that this is a big project and it is, it really is. Something that the town could be proud of and look forward to accomplishing. Uh, as big as a pro- uh, product, uh, project as this is, the town has gone into depth with plenty of meetings with these professionals to try and put a project together that the neighbors, the land use, and the town could be proud of. Uh, because it's a big project, we can't lose sight of the depth and the scope of the people that are working it. Uh, we've also gone out of our way as a town unit to make sure we've put third parties in place to oversee it. So it's not being handled like any other product, uh, project. And I just wanted to point that out because I understand it's a big project, but it's a project that fortunately we do have a, a, uh, a tenant looking to do something with that property. Bristol Myers, as we all know, had it on the, on the, uh, on the market. First they started with their in-house real estate for a year and a half, two years. Not sure the dates, we can check that. Then they went out to a, uh, commercial realtor who put it not only national, regional, but international. Could not find a tenant. The current owner, when they took it over, they went out to the marketplace, tried to fill that building. They couldn't do it. They've come up with this alternative and like I said, it's going to put the property to use. It's just that it's got to be monitored and you guys have done a good job with that. Uh, the questions that the commissioners had brought up this evening was great. And, uh, these people have some work to do and I look forward to a favorable result. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, I'm going to take it back to the commissioners. Commissioners have any more comments? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, uh, these go back, uh, to Casey's conditions of approval. I'd like to ask a, you know, a couple of questions. And, and actually it's, it's going to be a question to the applicant as well. And, um, you know, there's a big concern about blasting. And I know that from your presentation, you know, you, you, you kind of had a general idea where, you know, the blasting is going to occur, uh, but not, you know, specific. So in the conditions of approval, you know, there are quite a few, um, you know, conditions that support the neighbors, you know, if there's problems with, you know, the water quality. Um, you, you know, the way this is worded, um, the applicant will remedy, you know, problems. Um, what, so my, my question is kind of for the applicant at this point. Um, we're talking about, um, str- neighbors within fifteen hundred feet of where you blast. And my question is, and again, I, I know you don't know specifically where you're going to blast. Um, but, you know, uh, number one, do we have a list of neighbors within, you know, the area? I know there's a few on the map, but, but not, uh, you know, everybody, you know, can we get, you know, the distance from, you know, the general area to those neighbors? And, and, and the question is, you know, in, in, in based on, you know, what I've heard, it doesn't sound like the blasting is going to be very deep in the ground. Um, but, uh, you know, my concern is, um, is fifteen hundred feet, you know, the kind of accepted, uh, metric for, you know, looking at, you know, neighbors downstream properties. Um, you know, I'm, uh, what I'm getting at is, you know, the groundwater flow so that, uh, you know, it could interrupt the flow to somebody's well. Is, is fifteen hundred feet, you know, sufficient? Or should it be, you know, that's, you know, a third of a mile? So I guess that's a question for the applicant. Is fifteen hundred, you know?
So, Mr. Commissioner, we have with us today Brian Opel, who's our geotechnical engineer from TerraCon, who's analyzed the, you know, done the borings and looked at the, um, the, um, rock that's there and what might need to happen. We can bring him up to the, the table. Let me just tell you that I think in terms of that fifteen hundred feet, and again, Brian can answer it more clearly. Um, I believe that's a distance that's actually farther than, than most, um, recommended locations or distances. Usually it's a thousand feet from what, I think what Brian's told me, but we've got the, the experts. Let me have him talk to you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Brian Op. I'm a licensed engineer here in Connecticut and I work for a consulting firm, TerraCon, that's also in Connecticut. And I've done, uh, blasting and geotechnical investigations throughout the Northeast. At this site, you know, we have, uh, a certain depth of overburden. And then we have two types of rock, uh, a softer, weaker rock and then a harder, uh, rock. Um, basically what it boils down to is any propagation is going to travel differently through the different types of material. And, you know, fifteen hundred feet is a comfortable level away from any disturbance. You know, I, I think at some point you have to draw a line. Um, you don't want to be too close, you don't want to be too far away. Um, so, you know, I, I think that's a number that everyone has to come to agreement too. But I think fifteen hundred feet is a fair, is a fair place to be.
Um, yeah, because I'm, I have a well too, but I'm more than fifteen hundred feet away from the property. So I don't expect to be affected. Um, so, uh, you know, maybe on, on one of the conditions here for, for the neighbors, um, you know, I would like to get, you know, the neighbors, you know, how far they, they are away. Um, but it, it, the, one of the conditions of approval is any damage or problems to structures, water quality or water quality for any other property within the surveyed area resulting from any blasting shall be entirely remedied at no cost to the owners of the property sustaining the damage. So I, you know, I think from my perspective, the, the homeowners are pretty protected by that statement. Um, maybe we could add water, uh, quantity to that comment. I mean, if somebody's well, you know, goes down to a trickle, I, you know, I don't know. Uh, just a thought. And then my last question on the conditions of approval is, and we're, we're kind of talking about this now, is the item number ten, the hydro geological study summary verifying that proposed project and reggriding will not have any adverse impact to water quality or quantity. Um, it sounds like we're, we, we almost have that, uh, report. Will we be able to get that before our next meeting? I mean, uh, what, what's, what's the progress on that?
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're just about wrapping that up. So I would say the report would be within, it would definitely be before the next meeting.
Okay.
The next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Any other commissioners? Casey, anything else?
No, I, I just wanted to say that I think, um, I, I wanted to, I think a lot of good things have come out of this process. And I think neighbors have expressed, um, some valid concerns. And I think we've had some valid concerns, but I also wanted to commend the applicant for their willingness to really address cons- like every concern that I've brought up and address conditions up as, um, we've brought them up. So I think it's, I think it's been a, a good pro- a good, a great process.
Casey, do we need a motion to continue this?
Yes.
We do? Okay.
And I think the applicant has to agree based on where we are in the timeframe.
We would consent to an extension to your, to your November meeting.
Okay.
Especially since you couldn't act even. Especially since you couldn't act even if you wanted to yet.
Unless they wanted us to act, but I don't know if they like that act.
Mr. Chairman, a move we continue this application to our regularly scheduled November meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Secretary, uh, next on the agenda, special permit, stockpile earth material, Wallingford Group LLC, 70 North Plains Highway, application 412-18. Can you read in all the correspondence for the record? Thank you.
Chairman, we have a special permit, uh, legal notice special permit number 412-18. Special permit fill and excavation for Wallingford Group LLC to allow the stockpiling of earth materials at 70 North Plains Highway. We have interdepartmental referral dated 9/7/18, signed by the fire marshal. We have interdepartmental referral dated 9/7/18, uh, Gannon, signed by the fire marshal. We have correspondence, uh, to Jonathan Gavin, Wallingford Group LLC, dated September 28th, 2018. Correspondence, uh, to, uh, Ms. Casey Hand, town planner, dated October 9th, 2018. A set of revised plans dated October 9th, 2018. And I believe that's it.
Casey, this one, we're okay that if we need to act on it, right?
Well, I think we're going to talk about that as part of the, the process. I, I mean, I wanted to kind of give the applicant their opportunity to present first. My recommendation is going to be, um, because, uh, we don't have, a few reasons. We don't have comments from engineering yet. There's also some, um, I, I, I don't think there's anything that we can't agree to or that we can't iron out, but we haven't had the opportunity to do it yet. So, um, I, depending, you know, I was going to, I wanted them to have the opportunity to present, especially since I, I won't be here next month. But then, uh, what I was going to recommend is that you continue it for a month and kind of do a similar thing to what we did with the last applicant where, um, depending on the outcome of the conversation tonight, I could provide you with conditions of approval for next month. So I want them to get an opportu- I, they may feel differently about that. That was just kind of hat- something I recommended right before the meeting, so it's kind of up to, you know, I mean, whether or not they're willing to agree to that. If not, we'll have to talk about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm John Gavin from United Concrete, and I'm very thankful to be sitting in a cushion seat. Very happy.
Us too.
Oh, it's nice. This is gorgeous.
Even for record, Darren Overton from Malone and McBroom. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. Our offices are at 99 Realty Drive in Cheshire, here representing the applicant at Wallingford Group LLC, which John is a member of. So we have a special permit application before the commission. This is obviously a very different special permit application than the one you just heard before us. This is a much smaller site. This is a, a two-acre property. It's located at the end of, uh, North Plains Highway in Wallingford. This is in an industrial district. It is, uh, zoned I-40, and it's surrounded by, uh, existing developed industrial uses. Uh, there are no wetlands on the site. The site generally is relatively flat. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the area. There's about a two-to-three foot grade change across the site. It generally slopes in a southerly direction. And looking at the, the site plan, um, that you have before you, basically from the right side of the plan to the left side towards, uh, North Plains Highway, very gentle grade in that direction. The special permit application is under section, um, 6.10 of the regulations for excavation and filling. Essentially, the applicant wants the ability to be able to stockpile, um, millings, and other sort of earth-type products on the property, uh, for use on this property and, and other properties that they own. We've established in working with Casey some limits of the stockpile area. The, um, proposal is to be fenced in around the entire perimeter. There's a access gate shown along the, um, and, and kind of the, the southern corner of the property along North Plains Highway. We've shown a limit around the perimeter that the stockpiles wouldn't be located any closer than five feet to the property line. And also, we've, working with Casey, limited the height to a maximum of 30 feet. It was sort of, it was a little bit of an arbitrary number. We looked at the zoning regulations for building height and kept it under that requirement. And then we've limited the maximum amount of, uh, materials to be stored on the site for stockpiling of 7,000 yards. As part of this, the applicant does have a site plan application in for, um, what is eventually planned to be a later use on the property when the stockpiling operation is complete. That would be for a building material storage yard. The reason I bring that up now is because as, as part of the stockpiling, the regulations require a restoration plan. So that site plan would essentially be the restoration plan and moving from the stockpiling operation to what would be, um, the next use for the property, which would be permitted under the site plan application. We have looked at stormwater management as part of this. There is, like I mentioned, there's no wetlands on the site, there's no watercourses, there's no current concentrated discharge point from the site. We did some soil testing of the property. The underlying soil is, is all sand and gravel. We did permeability testing, and we found that the soils are very highly permeable. So we designed, uh, an initial infiltration type of system as we moved from the stockpiling operation to the end use. We proposed some underground galleys for storage and designed those so for essentially for a five-year storm, it would infiltrate all of the runoff from the site. And that equates to, uh, it was about 4.4 inches of, of runoff would be entirely stored and infiltrated. That's about all that we have as far as the presentation. If any specific questions that the commission may have, we'd be happy to try and address them this time.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions? Mr. Cohen.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll ask the obvious question. What exactly are the millings composed of?
They are ground-up asphalt. When they, when they come in to mill the roads and highways like they're doing on Route 5, they chop off the first two or three inches, and it's commonly used to top coat. And we have roughly 125 acres here in Wallingford industrial land that we use. You know, it's, sometimes it goes away, it cuts on levels, so we had an opportunity to get some. That's why we, it's kind of hard to come by. It's basically just a good ti- it's in lieu of a process, you know, it's very dusty. So it's, um, just a better product for us to use to store our, our product materials, just a preferred method to top coat the, uh, storage yards.
So you recycle, basically what you're doing?
Yes.
Are there any, um, you know, you just build a, a big pile, I guess, and is, is there any, uh, covering or, you know?
No.
Seal it or?
I mean, it's really no more harmful than your driveway. I mean, it's the angle of repose, the way it falls, just like a sand pile when it stays, it stays put. So there's really no runoff. It's, it's kind of gravel and just the batumis that's in it.
Thank you.
Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I just have, uh, a couple of questions. How long, uh, do you plan on using this property for stockpiling purposes?
Good question. Do you want to ask your second question first?
No, no, that's.
Unknown, you know, the permit's renewable every year, so, you know, it could be two years, could be five years, could be, you know, we also, we also generate a certain amount of waste concrete, which is, you know, secondary pore concrete that we're going to store there as well instead of using our prime areas, which we're very tight on space. That's really the essential reason why we bought this, which is we're, you know, we have five plants, four of them here in Wallingford, and we're just running space. That's why we bought this, a budding piece of property, a budding two, I think it's roughly 24 acres that we own right next to it, that we currently store concrete through a very similar type operation. So, you know, it's, this, this application is for the stockpiling, which is special permit. The other application is, you know, I, I would like to use it at some point or at least have the ability to use it to store concrete. I don't have a, a direct use for it now, like we talked about with Casey. I just, you know, if, if we get a large job, I don't want to be handcuffed by not having the ability not to be able to do it. That was the reason for the second application. You know, I've, I have no design right now to... I bought it because it became available and there was space, and then I had the opportunity to get these millings, which we use, you know, at an unknown rate. I mean, it just, so it's, um, basically for future use, but to give you an exact time, how long it'd be used for, I, I couldn't tell you that.
Sure, no, a- and I appreciate that. Your primary purpose is to use it in your storage yards? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any other plans for those millings other than using them in your storage yard?
No.
Do you have any current plans on, you know, uh, storing the millings and then storing, um, some of your cement products at the same time?
Well, cement is an ingredient in concrete.
Or, I'm sorry.
No, no problem, I'm like it, but, so, answer your question, yes. I would like the ability, I mean, you know, the 7,000 yards that we're asking for, the pile that's there, I think it's roughly 3,000 or 4,000. We arbitrarily, arbitrarily picked seven, so we didn't think that'd be a, you know, an aggressive number. We sometimes take in gravel, we sometimes take in, because we do our own site development. We want to have the ability to stockpile either topsoil, we do our own, you know, so in, in the beginning of the year, we own a lot of other properties here in town. If we had wanted to buy bulk mulch, say, you know, and have a place where we could do that, that we're not using up our other spot. But yes, I would like to have the ability. If we had a large job or we needed to, to store concrete there, like, I think they both could cohabitate. The whole thing is going to be fenced off, it's I-40, it's very similar use to the other budding properties that we own. So, you know, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, so it's not, you know, an eyesore to anybody.
Yeah, no, a- and I drove down there, um, uh, before the meeting, and, um, you know, I, I sort of think it's a, it's a nice location for that type of, um, purpose. So, you know, I, I think it, I think it actually lends itself to that, so.
And just for the record too, all the neighbors around there, the Vern is on the other side, and the fellow, the guys owning the two buildings to the right, they've been thrilled with what we've done. They called me up, thanked me, um, just, you know, there's no negativity of what we're doing there, so it's, there's no blowback there.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Allison.
Just, uh, two questions, Mr. Chairman. One for Mrs. Hand. You had a question, uh, about the use classification? That's resolved, there's not a deep issue?
Yeah, I, I did, um, you mean for, for the millings?
Correct.
Yeah, I did talk to DEEP, and they said, um, it's really up to the discretion of the local entity. So, um, they don't classify it, there, there is no deep permit required. I mean, it, it was sort of a long, uh, and somewhat gray answer, but the, the, the sort of conclusion of that conversation was that, um, basically for millings, they leave it up to the discretion of the land use board unless it was something that was to be used as a travelway, that was going to be, unless they were go- it was being used as a travelway, or it was going to sit there, um, basically for an indefinite period of time. So if you, if you dump a pile of milling somewhere and you're never going to use it ever again, eventually they'll come tell you, you have to do something about it. But for Mr. Gavin's purposes, no, it didn't need any deep permits.
Thank you. And just a quick question for the applicant, now I have two. The proposal is not to leave the pile just there. The proposal is to spread the millings across your yard to eventually potentially store concrete on top of, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. The, the other question, um, you may have heard earlier, um, is a traffic question. Given the fact that the plan is to stockpile the millings, do you foresee any additional truck usage coming in and out of your property due to the stockpiling of these millings?
No, I mean, it's, I forgot how many truckloads are there, but, you know, we're basically the only use on that street. So, I mean, it's, it'll be so infrequent that it's, nobody will even notice it.
I doubted it, but I wanted to hear it.
No, no problem, I just, but it's, you know, if it's two truckloads a week or, you know, it's like, kind of sort of the, Mr. Heinz's question, I'm not sure how fast the pile will go. You know, we're, we're trying to acquire other properties, it's, you know, which this would be perfect for, to top coat with. So, no, I don't think there'd be any real noticeable truck use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Casey? Have anything?
No, so I, um, I, the way this came about, yeah, it wasn't from the neighbors or anything. It was that I noticed the pile of millings, and I called Mr. Gavin, and I said, we have to, you know, go through the process, and he was very responsive to that. So, um, I'm appreciative of that, that we've, we're getting through the process. I, like I said, sort of at the beginning, I don't think there's anything that, um, I, that we probably can't come to an agreement on. I mean, my, my sort of, I guess, the outstanding issues for me at this point, um, and I know his, um, engineer worked hard to get us some revised plans and comments before the meeting. But I, to me, I think the, sort of the outstanding things and, um, I guess before I say that, do you want to open and discuss the site plan at the same time, and then you can act on them separately since they are sort of related? I mean, do you want to kind of segue into that conversation or no?
I'm fine with doing that, so. We would also be opening new business site plan building material yard, Wallingford Group LLC, 70 North Plains Highway, application 215-18. Mr. Secretary, would you read the correspondence into the record?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have a, uh, interdepartmental referral, uh, referencing, uh, application 215-18, dated 9/7/18, signed by the fire marshal. Correspondence to Jonathan Gavin, Wallingford Group LLC, dated September 28th, 2018. Interdepart- uh, inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, town planner from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated September 28th, 2018. Correspondence from Malone and McBroom, dated October 9th, 2018, to, uh, Casey Hand, town planner. And I'm assuming these revised plans would also go with this, uh, dated October 9th, 2018.
All right, back to you, Casey.
Okay, so I don't know if they wanted to present anything further about, you want to talk about the site plan?
So, the, the, again, Darren Overton from Malone and McBroom. The, uh, transition into the site plan use would be, we would envision that the millings would be spread over the top of the surface, creating the, the yard area for the storage of the building materials. There is a requirement in the regulations for buffering, buffering along the town road. Based on our research, um, North Plains Highway actually ends, um, at the abutting property owner. There's, you see a line on the plans, which is Harvest Park Associates, so that the town right away ends in that location, basically giving us the, the southern par- uh, boundary of the property would be frontage on North Plains Highway. As part of the regulations, it requires to be a, a planted buffer there of half the width of the, uh, the front setbacks. In transitioning to, um, the building material storage yard use, we would also implement that landscape buffer as part of that, which is shown on the plans. Other than that, there isn't much that really changes, other than the stockpiling either goes away or has continued to be renewed as part of this use, and possibly a portion of the property still being utilized. or has continued to be renewed as part of this use, and possibly a portion of the property, um, still being utilized for stockpiling if that special permit were to be renewed. Um, we've also shown, um, a grading plan here of how the surface runoff, granted, this is relatively flat side, as I had mentioned, and we've shown the inlets and the underground, um, detention and infiltration, well, it's actually retention and infiltration, um, as was designed to infiltrate the four point four inches of runoff, so this would be kind of the, the endpoint as far as the, the transition into the other use.
Can I, can I make a comment? If you guys, you, you said you've been out to the site before, I know there's a screening requirement, we're going to have a fence up, looking at the other property that we own, or we're going to have trees or shrubbery behind it, and I know there's a requirement for that, it just seems a little redundant to have a fence, then plant things behind it, looking at a property that I already own, it just, and, you know, it's put on the plant to meet the letter of the law, which, you know, we're trying to, uh, adhere to, but, I don't know, seems, uh, a little, uh, much.
Well done, with yours?
What's that?
You're all set, right? Commissioners have any other questions they want to ask?
I, I guess, if I could, through you, Mr. Chairman, based upon the site, um, and Mr. Gavin's comments, I mean, it, it does seem double, you know, with the, the fence and the trees, I, I, it's just one person, I'm, I'm fine with just the fence, which is more, if I'm hearing that correctly.
Along the front, is that what we're talking, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, you, you know.
Why not?
Yes.
Why not just move the fence back?
Um, because I'm out of property.
What?
I said, I'm out of property. I don't know, you know, we're, what's this, what's the setback there? How many feet?
Fifty.
Oh, for the building?
The building setback.
No, maybe for the screen.
Twenty-five.
I mean, just, I'm just trying to get as many square feet as possible of storage, that's all.
You have front landscaping requirement, I mean, you, it, it would, technically, you could go for a variance.
All right.
I, I mean, it's, it's not something we had talked, you, you could move the fence back, and then, you know, I mean, from a visual standpoint and improves it, you could go for a variance, it doesn't sound like the commission has a problem with you going for the variance, so, um, if you wanted, um. Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to pursue a variance, you do have kind of an extenuating circumstance, where it's not like you're really on a regular right finished travel way, so, I, I think you have a, an argument for that, but I don't think it's this commission's decision to make.
So, would it be something that would be approved with this? And if we could somehow get this approved, then go back to the variance afterwards?
Yeah, so you could get, I think you could get action on it like this, and then you could apply for the, the variance after the fact. I mean, is that something the commission is comfortable with? Yeah.
I mean, I think it would help, like, if we went to, to get the variance to show the pictures like it's a dirt road, I mean, I understand,
Yeah.
you know, if it was Route sixty-eight.
Yeah.
I, I understand the intent to keep it pretty, but this is, you know.
Yeah, it, I mean, there are a lot of circumstances where we don't support lands, front landscaping variances, because they're not appropriate, because it's somewhere like Route five, but, um, yeah, your circumstance is different, I mean, it's not even a finished, it's not a through travel way, yeah.
Right.
Just a quick question, though, eh, so then if he goes to ZBA for a variance, ZBA denies the variance.
Yep.
Which is probably unlikely, but, but let's just assume that they do. Uh, we've approved the site plan at that point. Then what happens?
Yeah, the, the site plan would be approved with the front landscaping, so if it was denied, then he'd have to do it.
Okay, okay.
If I might through you, Mr. Chairman, am I correct, the only thing we're missing is engineering comments?
There's engineering comments, and then I had a couple of things, um, which we can talk about tonight if you want. Um, but I, I mean, I know it's sort of like, it's just a big pile of millings, and then he's going to flat it out and put concrete on there, like, what's the big deal? Um, but, I, but I still, you know, want to make sure that we kind of do this the right way, and especially, we're talking about what I, I think is a pretty big pile of, I mean, thirty feet as the max is a pretty big pile of milling, so I think we need, I wanted us to have some additional conversation about toning that down a little bit, um, and then.
Twenty-five is, twenty-five is fine with me. The, the pile that's there now is like, by sixteen feet tall, I mean, Darren kind of took the number out of the air, so.
And, and I think it's pretty tall now, it's, I mean, how tall is your fence?
Uh, six feet.
Yeah.
I mean, who, who's going to see it, though?
I saw it.
Yeah, if you go down that road.
I, I saw it from North Plains Industrial Road. Um, so, and not that that's, I mean, it's an industrial area, like you said, it's I, it's I forty, so it's not, that's what that zone is intended for. But, um, I, so I think, I mean, unless, if the commission wants to pick a number tonight for height, that's fine, I, that's completely at your discretion. Um, the numbering, and then, um, the other things were, uh, the storm, so normally we require stormwater to be designed for a ten-year storm, this is designed for a five, and I know, um, I talked to Mr. Overton about that a little bit, and kind of where that was coming from, if, if engineering is comfortable with that, I'm fine with that, it's just, normally, we, normally, we require the ten-year, so I would want the okay from engineering on that.
Hey, um, I talked to Rob today at Ultra Midas, and he was fine with the five-year storm. I mean, it's, it's four and a half inches in twenty-four hours, that's.
Can we do it as a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Throw it that way?
Yep, that's fine.
Uh, we're, we don't have the engineering report or any correspondence.
Right.
No.
Is that, what's the cause of that?
The cause, I, I, I don't know. He, he probably, they probably just hasn't had an opportunity to review it yet.
Okay.
Like, I did verbally talk to him, and the difference between a five-year and a ten-year is like, another half inch of water on top of us, so it was like a puddle, so Rob was like, you know, he was, he was fine with it, I know there's nothing official other than my conversation with him, but.
We'd probably want to put, just as a condition of approval.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then the last thing was, I did want some kind of barrier or something to contain the kind of, if, I mean, even if you could put up like, concrete barrier, so I, I think I brought up curbing in there, but even, it's something to kind of contain the area so that you don't end up with, especially once it becomes flattened out, I mean, when you have millings or gravel or things like that, we run into, especially if you plow, or just from trucks, like, stuff getting dragged out onto the road or onto neighboring properties, so if there's a way to kind of define and contain that, that was the last thing that I was looking for.
The, the what, the stockpiles?
The stockpiles, and once it becomes millings. I mean, because for the stockpiles, you're talking about this whole site being stockpiled, and that's not a small amount of stockpiling, so.
What's there now is roughly four thousand yards, so you're about seventy percent more, which is, as the total site goes, it would be very small footprint on that soil, is, as far as tracking the millings out, that's what the other twenty acres are coated with, and there's been nothing tracked out on the road. Um, so I'm not sure what the barrier is for.
When you, when you plow and things, you don't have issues with the, with the millings getting pushed around?
Well, I guess we'd push it through the fence if that happened, but you could probably do, you could push it into a building if you had a building too, so I mean, it's, again, you gotta be a little bit careful when you plow, I mean, I'm not hundred percent sure what we're trying to prevent.
Well, if you're going end to end, line to line with millings, we don't, that's not usually what people, we don't usually allow that. I mean, usually you've got some sort of buffer, and so that there's some protection between you and the neighbors, and you and the road. So if you're going end to end, I think there should be kind of a, something that's like a clear stopgap.
Okay, so are you, are you looking for a barrier around the stockpile, I mean, I'm not, or around the perimeter of the property, or, um?
I think something around the edge of, I mean, it's, essentially, you're going to end up with like a big flat storage area, right?
It's going to look basically almost identical to what it looks like now, grading wise, it's, it's within a couple inches of finished grade now.
Right, and so, what's going to keep your rolled millings from getting pushed onto neighboring properties or pushed out onto the road? Like, it's going to kind of contain.
There's going to be a fence there around the whole property.
Okay. Okay, I just think they tend to have creep, um, even with a fence, because a fence is.
There's a retaining wall between Verna and ourselves.
Okay.
It's a two-foot retaining wall, so you, you know. I, I just, I honestly just don't see that, envision that happening, you know, you have to pull through the fence and
Okay.
you're gonna, you're gonna see the fence get destroyed.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Do we have to define, decide on the height of the pile?
Yeah.
Height of the pile?
Well, I think, I think in his application, he said thirty feet high, right?
Yeah, like we said, we picked that number out of the air, just because we had to come up with a number, if it's twenty-five or thirty, it's.
I'm fine with thirty.
I, I'm fine with thirty, but. Well, a lot of answers here. This is a public hearing, so we should go out to the public and see if anybody in the public from the hard chairs wants to come and talk. Seeing none. Is there anything else?
I'm fine with thirty, considering the location of the property.
I fully agree, it's location specific, yeah.
For the record.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I mean.
Mr. Allison?
Given where this property is, a thirty-foot-high stockpile versus an eighteen-foot-high stockpile versus a twenty-five-foot-high stockpile, I don't foresee it making that much of a difference.
Okay. Do you have a question? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Only if you're driving it home, that's, that's, if we still have other issues, it's fine.
I, I don't think we have any other issues, anything else? Yes.
Just a question through you to the town planner, so, it's two motions, first is special permit, the second one is the site plan. Is there a bond on either?
Uh, I, did I list one in my comments? Started to calculate one, maybe I never finished it. Um, if you want, I mean, it wouldn't be anything big, if you want, you can.
There's, there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, no, if you want, um, if the applicant is agreeable, you can just make it, like, to be determined, I'll, I'll do the calculation. It won't be anything big.
Thirty feet, nothing less than thirty feet, right?
Dollar a foot.
And then, if I could through, get through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, final sign-off on the site plan by engineering, not the special permit.
Right, yep.
Okay. And there are no other comments other than water and sewer, there was no health comments.
Yeah, yeah.
Fire marshal had his no comment, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? If not, I just call for, what?
Greenscape.
Greenscape?
Green, green inch, green.
He has to go to ZBA.
Yeah, he's got to go to ZBA for that.
Yeah, that's wrong night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First.
Same channel, wrong night.
Like to, uh, call for, uh, a motion to close the public hearing of application four one two dash one eight?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing and special permit application four one two dash one eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve a special permit application for stockpile earth materials for Wallingford Group LLC at seventy North Plains Highway, uh, application number two one five dash eighteen, um, subject to the following conditions, number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated nine twenty eighteen, and applicant's response received ten nine eighteen. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated nine twenty eighteen. That's it. Because everything else is like, okay.
Do I hear a second?
Do you want final, just the okay from the engineering department?
I was only going to do it on the site plan, that's why I asked you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is just special permit, right? I know, it's late, I know.
But, did, I, you said, uh, two one five dash one, it's four one two dash eight. That's why. I was getting confused here.
Rewind the tape.
Yes.
I, I got a little confused, I'm like, wow, he's starting on the second one, not the first one. So, just change that to one. All right, it's late, uh, four one two dash eight is the one that you're making this motion for, sir.
Four one two dash one eight.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Voting starting with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
And yes.
And yes, motion carries. Now you can make a motion for application two one five dash one eight, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve an application for Wallingford Group LLC, uh, for, uh, location seventy North Plains Highway, Wallingford, Connecticut, for a building material yard. Um, application number two one five dash eighteen, subject to the following conditions, number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated nine twenty eighteen, and the applicant's response received ten nine eighteen. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated nine twenty eighteen. Number three, final review and approval of application, subject to Town of Wallingford Town Engineering Department. Number four, the height of this stockpile material to be limited to no more than thirty feet at any point or location on the site. And number five, applicant should post at S and E bond in an amount to be determined by the Office of Town of Wallingford Planning and zoning.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Voting starting with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, motion carries. Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Chris. Can I, can I please ask if I come back again and not ever get behind Bristol Myers?
Oh, my God.
Funny.
You can stay with us for the finish. All right, we are going to bond releases and reductions. Bond releases and reductions.
You mean for me?
Bond release, yes?
Aye.
Um, okay, bond release is not ready yet, um, because we're still waiting for, um, engineering, um, and they have requested the entire bond release, so we're not, yeah, we're not ready for that.
Okay. How about you take it over from reports of officers and staff?
Okay, um, administrative approvals, I'll leave it, there's a whole bunch, do we have any questions, comments? No?
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Casey, I, I do have one question, and it's, it's not listed on here, um, but it wa, was the administrative approval for Fertie, and, you know, the fertilizer, uh, place, they wanted to store some hazardous, uh, material.
Yeah.
And, I, I, you know, the administrative approval kind of had a different date on it. Um, so, um, ha, 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 has that been approved, or?
I, if it has, it's only been approved for a couple days, I, I, it might, I think it's still open. But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Because I, I went, but honestly, I went back and forth on, you know, having that on the agenda.
Yeah.
And, and really, my question was, you know, and they referenced the hazardous material, but, you know, I was wondering, wh, why is it hazardous, why do they need that?
Yeah.
It really wasn't clear to me, and.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. That's been sort of an ongoing big conversation in terms of what's going on over there, because if you remember, um, when you guys approved the special permit for the conveyor system, so it's got those towers with the conveyor system, the question came up of. the question came up of whether or not there was hazardous materials, and at the time, the representation was made that there's not. But it turns out that in fact, part of their their mix, their ingredients, does involve hazardous material. And that was something that I had told them before they, it was going to need to get brought back to the commission in some fashion. Now, originally, the design was to have it inside the building. But there and and so there's a lot happening. I mean, that that building has a lot of challenges associated with it, so they run into a lot of challenges. And so they're doing a third-party review in terms of fire code and building code. So they've been ready, they've been allowed to do interior work for zoning purposes, but there's a lot of interior work and and a big part of it had to do with the hazardous material. So there are certain requirements, additional requirements for what they'd have to do inside the building. So now they're proposing to put it in those storage and that storage cabinet outside the building, which helps them from a building and fire code standpoint, but does put it outside the building. So that's why I wanted it to come back to you, but the, to answer your question, it's part of their, for some of their mixes, the materials are part of what they, part of the ingredients, so to speak, for their fertilizer mixes.
Yeah, I, like I said, I I went back and forth about, you know, having it on the agenda, but their their, you know, precautions, safety plans seem pretty, you know, good, so I said, uh.
Yeah, and I know that the fire marshal is requiring, because I had asked, I had some concerns about getting it back and forth between the cabinet and the building. I don't, I didn't want things like leaking or anything, so that, but it seems like the method of transport is is pretty solid.
Okay, thanks.
And I will also just point out, I guess, F, seven F, eighteen South Orchard Street. So that was an approval recently to, um, there's a building, it's just around the corner on South Orchard with, um, it's kind of an antique shop, used items, and had a boarding house approved above it. And so this approval was to allow conversion of, it has a new owner, and this approval was to allow conversion to multifamily on the upper story and a commercial component on the first story. And that's being, the buildings being rehabbed. And this approval wouldn't have been able to happen under the old regs. It was only able to happen because of the new regulations. And it also because of the new town center regulations, they, it became a very simple approval instead of a more complicated approval, which I think is what we wanted to have happen for uses that we want, for mixed uses that we want. So I just wanted to point out, I think that'll be a nice little example of, or a nice example of the the regs kind of in action. Um, all right, anything else on those?
Casey, just to go back, I'm gonna ask the secretary to read in one more piece of correspondence from application
Okay.
Oh, there you are. It was at the bottom of the pile.
Okay.
Came across it, but the traffic analysis for warehouse development by Research Parkway dated September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. My apology, I thought we had them all too, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was pretty careful with those.
We all had, we had it.
Okay, yeah.
All right, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, so next, ZBA decisions of September seventeenth. No, okay. Um, so they approved a variance for a front porch at twenty-two Bailey Ave. And, oh, yeah, I was at that meeting. I covered that meeting, that's right. And they, I guess the one of significance is the denial for the panels for the signage on, for a property on Route five. So there were signage panels as part of the larger signage program. The concern was, we can't dictate what a sign says or doesn't say, or it looks like or doesn't look like. So once you've approved a certain square footage, you've approved a certain square footage, so that did get denied. And then there were two carryovers from last month that will be on for this month. Again, one-twenty-two North Plains Industrial Road, that was for the dumpsters, the location of the dumpsters. So they are, what we wanted from last month was an additional screening plan. And the board wanted more specifics about exactly where the dumpsters would be located. And then, no, twelve-twenty-four South Broad Street. Oh, so Penn Highway was the other one that got carried over. That was for a variety of landscaping and other requests on Penn Highway. That got carried over to explore some additional options. And then new things for this month. Reconfiguration of parking along Capital Drive at one-twenty-two North Plains Industrial Road and additional storage area at twelve-twenty-four South Broad Street. And that's it.
All right.
All right, and then zoning enforcement log. We have our zoning enforcement officer here, although I don't know that she was prepared to have to talk about the log, so I'm kinda springing it on her. But there are several things that got closed out. Probably in the coming months, there will be a little bit less emphasis or a little more prioritizing that's gonna have to be done with zoning enforcement. But if there's anything you want us to know or pursue, or you have any questions? Let me know now.
Mr. Cohen.
I, yes, I I I see we have a rooster problem in Wallingford. Um, no, that's not what I wanted to ask, but.
Sending them to your house.
That's okay, I got room. No, I, I, you know, Casey and I get frequent notes from a resident about paradise sales. And I I I really am, you know, sympathetic to to the, you know, issues that are apparently still ongoing over there. And I know it's not an easy thing, but I just wanted to kinda get a feel for,
Sure.
you know,
Yeah.
how things are going there.
Yeah. I think that is well put. It's kind of an ongoing, you know, I think there are lots of sides to that. And I, there was an issue you may have seen on the ZBA agenda for last month. Based on some of the complaints we had received, I did issue a violation notice for some events that were held that hadn't been sort of reported per the requirements of the new regs. But between the time, and they appealed the notice, and then shortly before the meeting, they did apply, provide me with documentation from the event holders indicating that they weren't reserved events and that they weren't affiliated with the winery. So they don't become defined events at that point. So I I withdrew the violation notice before the meeting. I do, where they stand right now, so and and so we're gonna have a meeting to, I think, to talk about, kinda just make sure they and I are on the same page in terms of what's a reportable event and what's not. I mean, there is a lot of leeway in the regulation. There there are a lot of things where I understand the neighbors' concern, but they aren't necessarily zoning violations. There are some other things that maybe are other things. So the the outstanding issue, the the remaining issue right now is you may remember they submitted for site plan approval several months ago, and then it ended up getting withdrawn because there were some outstanding issues and they had some wetlands issues. So they do need to reapply to true up the things that are compliant and kinda modify some of the things that aren't compliant. And then there are also some additional things that they want to do there. And I know there is, I have had conversations within the last month with their design professional about that. So I do anticipate that they'll be resubmitting with that, but it is, I mean, it's a, I think the commission experienced trying to kind of walk that line between protecting the neighbors' rights and allowing and encouraging agribusiness because agribusiness is good for the community, and then kinda figuring out where that line is. And and that's not a, this particular challenge is not unique to Wallingford. Other communities have had the same challenge. So I do try to keep up with, you know, I do try to respond to all of the complaints that I get and look into all of the complaints that I get and keep it by the book.
Right, and, you know, I I think your efforts are appreciated. The, you know, one thing that really stuck out from the last note was apparently there was a bus that let a people, a bunch of people off, I I mean, a large coach. And apparently it stayed there for quite some time. And I know I would be kind of upset. Is it, is there any way we could, you know, get the police or traffic commission to put, you know, no bus parking on that cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I think we could request, I mean, I can talk to the chief about that. I think we could request that there's just no parking in the cul-de-sac. I mean, I don't know how they would, if if they would be happy with that or not in the in the neighborhood. I mean, but I can, I can, I can at least find out what the options are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because and they should, I mean, obviously, I guess the other part of that is the zoning regulations require you to provide for parking on your property. So really, no one should be having their parking overflow on a public road like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks, Casey.
Anything else? All right. Call for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you very much.